Okay, welcome everyone. It's 6:30. We are gonna get underway with our city council meeting tonight. I'd like to call it to order. And we will stand for our pledge of allegiance and I'll ask Mayor Protem Mendez to lead us in the pledge.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll have roll call.
Councilmember Brogi. Mayor Protem Mendez.
Here.
Mayor Villasenor.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Garnica.
Excellent. Next on our agenda is our approval of the agenda. I'll look for a motion. So moved by Mayor Protem. Second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have an approved agenda. And now we'll move on to public comments. And we have one person who is here for general public comment. I just wanted to say if there was any other general public comments for items that are not on an agendized item, now is the time. So I'll call up Gabe Candelario. That's quite a thing to get an applause before you speak. Okay, and you have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. I'm back again just to talk to you guys about the, uh, next week, we are having our Cones with Cops event at One Step Palaves. It's gonna be on Wednesday, April 30th. I just looked at the forecast. It looks like it's gonna be 81 degrees, so it's the perfect weather to come out and have some ice cream. This event is gonna be open to the entire community, not just the youth, but it will be focused on youth as well, too, and just trying to build better relationships between our community and our local law enforcement. So if you guys want, you guys can feel free to look, find more information at our website. It's at myonestep.org, or you can also follow us on Instagram and follow, and find more information there. My information is also located on the bottom of the flyers that I have supplied to you all, and I'd love to see you all there. Also, Manny, I'm so happy you're back, so shout out. So, alright, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Gabe. Excellent. Okay, no more public comments, so we will move on from that agenda item, and we'll move on now to number six, our city council reports, our recommendations, any comments we have, committee commission reports, and different board reports. So this is now, we've adjusted our agenda to now sort of include all of these together. It's basically our city council report out. So I'll hand it over to my fellow council members. Yes, John?
So I attended the groundwater sustainability area.
You have your mic on?
I committed, I attended the, uh, the meeting for the Fillmore-Piru groundwater sustainability basin executive meeting. Basically, it's, it's a meeting where we discuss the groundwater that gets pumped out of the water for this entire basin. And unfortunately, we, one of the report outs was that it looks like United Water is, United Water Conservation is looking at issuing a bond probably in November for about $150 to $200 million, which will affect the water rates for those people that are on groundwater. I don't know how that's gonna affect the, the city, but they're saying that the, the rates which are currently set by United Water Conservation District, again, this is for, not for the city of Fillmore, we pay a, in a different calculation, but for people outside the city limits, it looks like they're estimating that it could go from $40 to $50 per acre foot to about $200 per acre foot, so a substantial increase. And so that, that was the main takeaway from, from, from that meeting.
Thank you, John. Can I ask a question about that?
Just so you know, I'm very limited, I'm in my knowledge, but please ask away.
Okay, um, so forty, it could go up to $200 per acre foot.
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, this, the bond, the 150, 200, is going for what? What are they charging all the money for?
So apparently with one of the, because we, every year, or every five years, the, uh, the basin has to submit a sustainability report, how we're gonna maintain the water in, uh, in the basin, right, in Piru and Fillmore. And in that report, the state has identified several areas where we have to conserve additional water. And essentially what they're saying is, in order to do that, we have to put in a large infrastructure project to conserve more water and maintain the levels of water that we have. So I'm gonna get more detail for, for the council on that, but it's not 100% certain, but it's very likely.
Yeah, thank you for that. That should be, that'll, that'll really affect, you know, the surrounding ranchers and all that, who are, have their wells and, and, you know, get charged per acre foot. Okay, thank you. All right, any other council members to report?
April 17th, there was the Economic Development Committee meeting held out in Camarillo and Mission Oaks, and there were several items. One of the items was a discussion on implementing communications and marketing strategy assessments, and we're looking for stakeholder engagement. Also, there was an item to approve an agreement with the Child Development Resources of Ventura County, and that was, that was the gist of the meeting, but I just wanted to remind our business owners and the community members here in Fillmore, that there's a lot of tools that EDC offers to help small business owners be successful. So if you're struggling or need some help, I would reach out to EDC and look at all the tools that they, and resources that they offer.
All right, thank you. Yes, Carrie?
Yeah, just a couple things. First, I'm hoping that our constituents and both watching from home and those that are in attendance here are monitoring social media sites for, to see what's happening with the Fillmore Theater. It's, a lot of activity going on there, lots of movies and plays and music shows being hosted there for people of all ages, so I'm hoping that we can continue to support them and help them do well. And then the other, I just wanted to mention, I'm still hosting my porch talks on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, or Wednesday of every month, so it'll be Wednesday night following the council meeting, so tomorrow night, and we're having the great turnouts, great conversation about anything, everything related to Fillmore, and I would certainly love to have, any of you who've not attended, a lot of you who are here have attended, so I appreciate that, and I hope it's beneficial, but I know there's a lot of people in the community that are just hearing about it, so put that on your calendars, the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Updates?
Okay, on my end, and I think our city manager will probably make a pitch too, but a reminder that Fillmore is hosting Earth Day this coming Saturday, April 26th. It will be right here in Central Park, right here in front of City Hall, I think over in the grassy area. It'll be from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There'll be vendors, coloring stations, make a bird feeder, different activities, sensory friendly play as well, and a scavenger hunt. So again, open for all the families, young, old, anywhere in the middle. Come out to Earth Day, learn something new, learn about what you can do as a resident here to help, you know, to help make our, our air cleaner, our world cleaner, and do your part. So that's the announcement about Earth Day, and, let's see, I also wanted to mention, piggyback off of Carrie mentioning that she, that the porch, her porch talks are going great. I'm continuing to try to publish, once a month, a real quick reel about what the city has been doing, talking to everything from infrastructure to, to just different topics, but I know that in 90 seconds, not much detail comes across, so I'm planning to do a little bit of a deeper delve and host a little bit, you know, talk a little bit more online and via social media about what, what the city's been up to. So I just wanna welcome everyone to do that, try to post them on the city sites, and yeah, that's my update. Okay. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for your report outs, and next on our agenda is our consent calendar. I'll look for a motion on our consent calendar.
So moved?
Okay, I have a motion. The second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries for our consent calendar. And we'll move on to our new business, and first on our agenda is item 8A, consideration of participation in Clean Power Alliance feasibility study.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and quickly introduce the item, and then we have a staff member from the Clean Power Alliance. So staff is seeking direction tonight from city council regarding the participation in a feasibility study to explore whether the city should join the Clean Power Alliance or the CPA. No formal staff recommendation is provided at this time. You do have alternatives on your staff report, which is approve the participation in the CPA feasibility study and authorize a $10,000 general fund reserve transfer. Direct staff to not participate at this time or request additional information from CPA or other agencies prior to making this decision. Your staff report did include an older staff report, just for transparency, from 2018, and so I will turn it over to Karen tonight so that she could delve into, you know, the CPA, what this means for the city, and then also answer whether some of the information that was provided to you from 2018, whether it's changed, or I'm sure some things have been updated. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will you be bringing up my slides? Okay, is there something I need to do?
While she's doing that, I'll just note that we do have several public speakers on this item for our council, so we'll, we'll take questions, but we'll save our comments till after our public speakers.
Get to the start? Here we go. All right, thank you very much, Mayor Villasenor, council members. I'm very happy to be back here to talk with you about Clean Power Alliance and the process for Fillmore to consider joining. A lot has happened since I was here a couple of years ago, including the fact that we began service just about a year ago to the city of Santa Paula, just down the road, and in October of this year, we will begin, be beginning service to Port Huinemi, and so we will be serving all of Ventura County with the exception of the city of Fillmore. So again, happy to be here tonight. So Clean Power Alliance is a publicly owned electricity provider. We serve customers with clean energy choices at competitive rates. We are what's known as a community choice aggregator. We purchase clean power, and Southern California Edison delivers that power. So from a customer perspective, not a lot changes. Customers continue to receive a single monthly bill for their electricity. That bill includes SCE charges for the delivery of the electricity, and it includes CPA charges for the electricity supply or generation. These charges are not a new fee or an additional fee, they simply replace the fees that customers were previously paying to SCE for that generation or supply. We are, as I said, a community choice aggregator. This is a kind of entity that was enabled by state legislation back in 2002 to, to allow local communities to have local control, transparency, accountability, and choice in their sources of electricity. We are, like most community choice aggregators, organized as a joint powers authority. We have 38 member jurisdictions currently. That includes both the county of Ventura and the county of Los Angeles, covering all the unincorporated parts of both counties, plus 36 cities within those two counties. In total, we serve more than 3 million residents and businesses through over 1 million customer accounts. We are the largest CCA in the state of California, which effectively means we're the largest CCA in the country. We are also the largest, we are the number one provider of green power in the United States, as designated by the US Department of Energy. As a JPA, each member of the, of the JPA has a seat on the board of directors. We are one member, one vote, JPA. And as a public, not-for-profit entity, our net revenues are pooled and reinvested into local programs and procurement for the communities we serve. We purchase, you can imagine, as the largest green power provider, that means we are in the business of procuring a lot of green energy. To date, we have secured 56 long-term contracts totaling nearly 2,600 megawatts of renewable energy and over 1,900 megawatts of, of battery energy storage. Overall, our total energy portfolio is around 70% renewable. One of the distinctions between us and investor-owned utilities, we're all, we, like, like all load-serving entities in the state, we are subject to regulation by the CPUC, the California Energy Commission, on things, on standards related to reliability, on broad state policy goals around things like renewable energy and energy supply and resource planning. But as a CCA, we also have considerable autonomy around how we meet those state standards and targets. And so we are able to reflect our member jurisdictions' preferences and values around energy procurement, so we are able to incorporate into our evaluation of energy product, projects, their location, and with a preference for projects that are in or close to our territory, projects that prioritize workforce development, that provide benefits to local and disadvantaged communities, and projects that show high levels of environmental stewardship. So as you can tell from, that, from the name, uh, the, the CCA name, choice is, is central to who we are and our value proposition. CPA offers our customers three energy options with differing levels of renewable energy content at different price points. So we have 100% green power that is 100% renewable, and typically is about a 5% total bill premium to SCE's base rate, and a little over two-thirds of our customers have chosen 100% green power. Our next product is Clean Power, which provides 50% clean power, and typically is about the same price as SCE's base rate, and a little, about a fifth of our customers are, are getting Clean Power. And then our third product is Lean Power, which provides 40% clean energy, and is around a 1% discount to SCE's base rate, and about a tenth of our customers have chosen Lean, Lean Power. As it notes at the bottom, our customers can switch between our three energy products at any time. They can also opt out of CPA service at any time and return to bundled service with SCE. Since we launched in 2018, we've been able to offer our customers highly competitive rates, usually including at least one option that is the lowest cost option in the region. Our board typically sets rates annually in July, and then the comparisons may fluctuate over the course of the year because Edison typically changes their rates four or five times a year. I, I meant to note on the previous slide, just for comparison, so our Lean Power product, in terms of the, the clean energy content, environmental performance, is about equivalent to SCE's product, so it's similar environmental performance for a small discount. The other, Clean Power, is about the same price as SCE for higher renewable content, and then 100% green is about two and a half times the, the renewable content of SCE for, for that small premium. So by state law, when communities join a CCA, the CCA becomes the default electricity supplier for the customers in that community, and the community, in the form of the city council, chooses the default rate option that customers will be placed on if they do not choose to do something else, if they don't choose a different option, or, or if they don't choose to opt out. So this just shows you where our current member communities land on their preferred energy options, and you can see that the communities in Ventura County are spread across the three options, so Simi Valley, which is, was one of the seven cities that joined CPA in 2018 when we, when we launched. They started out at Lean Power and, and still are on Lean Power. Moore Park, you can see, is at Clean Power. They also joined in 2018. Port Huinemi, as I mentioned, is beginning service later this year, and their city council, just at the beginning of this year, decided to start at the Clean Power level as well. And then the remainder of the Ventura County jurisdictions, most of them actually started in, in, when we launched, started at 100% Green Power. The, the cities that are embold on this list, including Camarillo, are cities that started, when they, when they first joined, they started at one level, and then subsequently chose to switch to a different default level. So Camarillo, if I remember right, started, like Simi Valley, started at Lean Power, and then a couple of years later, decided to opt up to 100% Green. And that is, so that is something that the cities can choose to do, is to change the default after they join. Very important for our customers, customers who are eligible for and receiving bill assistance through programs like CARE, FARA, medical baseline, remain enrolled in those programs. Nothing changes. They continue to see, receive the same benefits when they become CPA customers. They don't have to re-enroll or anything. Another thing to note is that those communities that choose 100% Green Power as their default energy option, in those communities, the customers who are on bill assistance programs receive the 100% renewable energy, just like everybody else, but they get it at the Clean Power rate, so they don't see an increase in their bills. And also note that our program investments prioritize low-income customers and communities, and I think in my next slide, I'll talk a little bit, yeah, a little bit about those programs. So one of the great benefits of, of joining a CCA is that the, the net revenues that are generated aren't going to shareholder profits. They get reinvested in the communities that we serve, and we have a, a growing list of program offerings. I won't go through all of these, though I'm happy to answer questions on any of them. I'll just highlight a couple. Power Ready is a program where CPA provides solar plus storage backup energy system to cities for a facility that has, you know, some critical function to ensure that that facility has backup power in case of an emergency. So some of our member agencies have taken advantage of this for perhaps a city hall or fire station, a library cooling center, those are some of the examples. Another one I'll mention, the, uh, brand-new program, the Room Air Conditioner Rebate. This is a $300 instant savings rebate for low-income customers to purchase high, high-efficiency window air conditioning units. Another relatively new program, our EV Smart Charge program, is an app that helps customers save money by shifting when they charge their electric vehicles. Over in the middle column, Energize Communities, we're ramping up a program to fund, to help the planning and funding of community EV charging stations. And then over on the right, I'll just mention our Sun Storage Rebate Program, particularly, you know, in, in the wake of so many devastating wildfires, you know, there's a lot of increasing interest in resilience and having backup battery storage in the event of, you know, to, to weather PSPS events, and, and that offers up to a $2,250 rebate for installing solar battery storage. Just one other thing I wanted to, to note here, when you join CPA, you still have access to virtually all of SCE's customer programs as well, so you get, with CPA, you get the added benefit of the access to CPA's programs in addition to SCE's. Just a couple other ways in which we support our communities. We have a community benefits grant program where we provide approximately $300,000 annually to community-based organizations. We have a scholarship program to provide financial assistance to community college students who are pursuing energy-focused careers, and we have a workforce development program. We're currently partnering with local training programs on equipping workers who are looking to pursue career-track jobs in electrification. So this is actually my last slide, about the process, how, how it works to consider joining CPA. So the first step is, you know, for the city to, to express interest in joining this, in joining CPA, and specifically to commit, to, to commit the fee to, for CPA to conduct a feasibility study. The feasibility study looks primarily at the impact to existing CPA customers of bringing new, new jurisdiction into the JPA. It does, it also looks at the greenhouse gas emissions impact. We are also very happy to work with the city to look at, really, the only other direct financial impact to the city is your own electricity accounts, and the financial impact to those depends on, you know, which, which energy rate option you choose, so it could be a savings, it could be a small increase in energy costs, and, and we're happy to work with you to, to evaluate that. If, if CPA, if the CPA board decides not to invite a city to join, that $10,000 fee will be refunded, and it also, undertaking the feasibility study does not commit the city in any way to move forward. So once we conduct the feasibility study, typically our board will review those results and make a decision on inviting the city to join in September. The city then has a couple of months to, to, to do two readings of an ordinance to join the JPA, and then by the end of December, CPA has to... And then by the end of December, CPA has to draft, have its board approve, and then submit to the CPUC, an implementation plan addendum. The CPUC then has until March of the following year to approve that addendum. And then there's kind of a waiting period by design. And service to the city doesn't begin until the following year. So hypothetically, if a city were to pursue this path in 2025, we would submit the implementation plan by the end of the year, get approved in March, and then service, in March of 2026, and then service would begin sometime in 2027. And that intervening period is partly to allow for us to plan or prepare for the energy procurement to meet the load for your customers. It also is a period for us and you to collaborate on community outreach and education, to let people know about what's coming, and what their choices are, and how to exercise those And I think, I think that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Yes, I know we have a few questions.
Hi Karen. Thank you so much for the presentation. Very informative. The question I have is, I think I know the answer to, but I'd like to get your confirmation. So because your organization is purchasing the energy, and then it's being transmitted through SCE existing lines, and then being delivered to us theoretically, that would mean that if we still, we would still be subject to the PSPSs, right? The public safety power outages. In other words, you don't, this doesn't affect any of that, that whole decision-making process? SCE is still gonna, if the winds kick up and they decide, hey, it's too dangerous to be transmitting power, they're still gonna send out a notice and turn off the power? Is that correct?
That, that is correct. SCE still owns, maintains, operates the lines and wires.
Okay. And then a second, second question, unrelated. So obviously, as green power becomes more and more prevalent, and the amount of green power that's being produced continues to increase, I would imagine the cost per unit would go down. So what happens to that savings over time? Like, let's say that eventually, every city in California is, you know, part of a similar alliance, and the demand for green energy is very high, I would imagine that the cost per unit would come down. So what, what happens to that savings as the amount of energy being produced by green energy continues to rise?
So ultimately, that's a decision that our board of directors makes. So our member agencies, you know, decide, you know, set, approve rates and budgets every year. In general, you know, we do our rate setting based on the cost to serve our customers. And so as those costs go down, those savings are, translate into lower rates for our customers.
Thank you. Yes, Louise?
Yeah, I had a question, just to piggyback off of what John said regarding the brownouts. And during one of the slides, it was a mention of backup generators and stuff like that for critical facilities. So my question is, one of the issues that we had with Southern California Edison was having generators for people who are disabled, or they really need their electricity at home during these brownouts. Does, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, if we were to participate in the Clean Power Alliance, will Edison then not provide any kind of backup generators or backup battery packs for, for those people who might need it? Because we are now with CPA theoretically?
As I said, with few exceptions, CPA customers continue to have access to all of the same SCE programs that they currently do. I don't, I don't know of any reason why this, you know, this particular one would be any different.
I see. And, and that is theoretically speaking, because we were talking to SCE about not providing enough of that for us. And another question that I have is regarding the, the 68% of the customers have the 100% clean. So it says 5% increase in comparison to the SCE bill. Is that a locked number? Or does that number change or fluctuate? Does it increase? Might, might a customer see it go up to 15, 20%?
So two parts to that answer. One is that, you know, the CPA board sets rates. As I said, they typically aim to set rates, well, I don't know if I said this, but I'll say it now. They typically aim to set rates once a year, and, and to provide, you know, rate stability and predictability for our customers. SCE's rates can and do change more frequently. So even though our customers' rates might not change, the relative comparison to SCE might change over the course of the year. So it does fluctuate. In general, the, you know, the targets that the board sets each year tend to hold pretty well. If they get way out of whack, then our board can and has in the past made an adjustment to our rates to bring the competitive comparisons back into line.
And let's say a customer is seeing that they might end up saving more money if they, if they were to opt out, which they have the option to do at any time. What are the concerns of somebody opting out outside of a particular window? Is, does SCE provide a window of, to opt out in?
Yeah. So the way it works is when, when a community first begins service with CPA, all customers have a 60-day window where they can opt out with, you know, with no negative, no nothing. It just, you know, just opt out, done. After that 60-day window, they can still opt out at any time. There are two different, two things that are different after that 60-day window. One is that SCE will charge a one-time processing fee. For as long as CPA has been in existence, that fee has been 50 cents. So 50 cents, like a poster stamp. SCE could change it at any time, but they haven't changed it in the last seven years. And then the other thing, the more important thing, is that SCE requires a, they call it a transition period, a six-month transition period. And this is for them to, you know, as we do when we're looking to bring a new community on, they have to build this into their, their procurement plans, that this load is coming back. So this six-month transition period allows for that. During that six-month transition period, the customer has a choice. They can choose to immediately return to SCE bundled rates. What SCE will do during that six-month period is they'll put them on what's called a transition bundled service rate, TBS. This is a price, energy price that fluctuates with the market. So, so there's some risk. You might save some money, you might, you know, you might end up paying more if energy prices skyrocket during that six-month period. Your other choice during that six-month period is to say, hey, I want to opt out, but during that six-month transition period, I'm going to stay on CPA rates. And, you know, if your primary objective is to save money, we would advise you opt down to lean power. It's probably your least-cost option anyways, save a little money. Either, either way you go, at the end of the six-month transition period, you will automatically be switched back to the regular SCE bundled rates. So that, that's the way the opt-out works. We try to make it as easy as possible for customers who want to exercise that choice. They can call our call center, they can go online and do it on our website, they can send us an email.
Thank you. And one more question. Where is the nearest solar plant or clean energy plant that we would, that SCE would be getting the power from to transfer to us? I see that there might be opportunities for, for programs to get the youth involved into getting into this field. And where is the nearest generating facility?
That's a, that's a good question, and I wish I had a good map handy. We have, we have generating facilities, solar and wind, you know, sort of just over the hill in Antelope Valley, in the Palm Dale-Lancaster Kern County area. We have some community solar projects in, in Los Angeles, in the Pico Rivera and Carson areas. We were, we were hoping to get, I was certainly hoping to get one in Ventura County, but so far, we haven't gotten one here. We do have standalone battery storage projects within our service territory. So, you know, and most of our, most of our energy procured is coming from California, and a lot of it, you know, probably the majority of it, from Southern California. So it's, it's relatively close by.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent questions. Any more? Let's see. Albert?
I had a question. A couple. Is there an opportunity to increase local control over our energy mix and pricing?
Yes. I mean, that, that's essentially what Clean Power Alliance, you know, provides, is local control. If you wanted to get hyper-local, if you wanted to have, you know, if the city of Fillmore wanted to have sole control, you could form, there are a few places that have formed a CCA that is basically a single jurisdiction that is, you know, owned and run by the city itself. Very few cities do that anymore. Well, very few cities have done that period. It, it gives you more control, it also, you know, gives you considerably more risk, and it puts considerably more demands on your staff and governing body. But we, you know, I think, and I would encourage you to reach out to, you know, some of your neighboring cities who have been participating in CPA for a while now. But I think that, I think most of them would agree that they have, you know, a high degree of insight into and, say, in decisions around procurement, the content of our energy, and the rates that our customers pay.
Thank you. And I want to piggyback one more off of what Louise had asked. Say they opt out, but then later on in the future, say you want to go back in. Can a customer, I think I know the question, can you?
Can they come back?
Yes.
Yes, yes, they can. Again, there are some rules. They're pretty much all imposed by SCE. So once you've switched back to SCE, you can't come back to CPA for at least 12 months. You have to stay with, if you switch back to SCE, you have to stay with them for 12 months before coming back. But then, yes, you are welcome to come back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Carrie.
First question, as our city manager, will we be hearing from you with regard to a feasibility study? Or we're going to make a decision based on our presentation thus far as to whether we want to opt in? Because what's before us is not whether to decide to go with the...
Is the feasibility study what's before you right now? That was one of the, either you choose to do that, or you choose to not move forward. So that's what we're, that's why she's here today, to discuss whether you want to continue with the feasibility study and continue this road, or if you want to take no action.
Well, one question I have with regard to feasibility studies, who would be doing that?
That would be them.
Okay. So we would have CPA doing the feasibility study to throw out ideas as to whether it's a good idea or a bad idea?
They will be exploring whether a Fillmore would be good for them to join. So, you know, they'll, also the clean energy, but also making sure that Fillmore is a good fit for the CPA.
I'm hesitant, because this is my third experience in having CPA present to the Fillmore City Council. I was here in 2018, and went through a presentation, and at that point in time, got to a vote, and the city council voted no, that we want to stick with Edison. And I see that there have been, in that interim, there have been several other communities that have opted in to participate in the CPA. And, I mean, I would just like to hear more feedback. What we did previously in 2018 is we had Edison come and also do a presentation. So we heard, we were hearing both sides of, you know, this is a good thing. It allowed for us, I think, to make a better and more informed decision when we knew what we were gaining and losing on, by either staying with Edison or going with CPA, or the opposite.
Do you have a question, Carrie, for Karen?
Well...
I just, why not, we have public comments, too, to hear on the side.
Right. I understand. Yeah, we're going to go to public comments. I'll go ahead and hold off any other questions I have at this point. But I appreciate your presentation, and is, you know, well-informed, and it's, you know, great to see that there are several other communities, especially from Ventura County, that are participating. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, another question from John.
Karen, one of the things that I've noticed, at least on my bill, my SCE bill, is that the rates have changed in the upward direction. One of the things that I would like to see, if possible, would be a comparison of the rates, the SCE generation rates versus the CPA generation rates over time. Because I have a suspicion, at least my bill, from what I'm paying on the bill, that the rates from SCE have continuously increased over time. I've not really seen it plateau or go down. And I'd like to see how that compares to, to the rates from the CPA.
Yes. I mean, to that question and to any other questions, you know, we are very happy to come back, to meet with you, to present more information, to answer more questions. And I will say, you know, every city that I've worked with has done things a little differently. Some have had study sessions, some have taken years to make this decision, some have done it, you know, very quickly without, you know, a whole lot of debate. Some have had community forums, have done community surveys, et cetera. To your specific question about, about rates, so rates, you know, electricity bill, all of our electricity bills have been going up and up and up, and that's true statewide. By far, the biggest driver of that are the delivery charges, the charges for the lines and wires, and of course, wildfire liabilities, and line hardening are, you know, have been a major driver of that. Unfortunately, you know, you have to pay those delivery charges to SCE, whether your electricity is coming from CPA or from SCE. So joining CPA is not going to change that part of the equation. But happy to share more information about how SCE's generation rates have compared with CPA's over time. In general, as I say, you know, CPA has been able to offer very competitive rates. And, you know, we've, we've gone back and looked, you know, over the span of several years, to see, you know, in total, have customers, you know, paid more, saved more. And generally speaking, you know, they've, they have been, you know, they have received, they have seen bills that are at least as good as the targets that the board have set, and in some cases, better.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I do also have some questions, Karen. Thank you for your presentation. I think Louise asked the question I was going to ask as well, about local programs, where were examples of this workforce development? Because I think that would be such a boon to have something, you know, if not here in Fillmore, definitely in Ventura County.
Yeah. And we are, so we, we, the scholarship program I mentioned, we partner with the Ventura County Community Colleges on that. We are, I don't have the details on this, but we are in the midst of negotiating with a training center, a training program in Ventura County for this workforce development sort of, I forget the name of it. It's sort of a pre-job training program. So, so more... of a pre-job training program. So, so more to come on that.
Great. Great. And to let you know, we have a lot of wind. We have a lot of wind. I live down in River Rock. We've got a lot of winds. We've got a lot of wind power coming through our valley. My next question is about the CARE and the FARA programs, which are the, the programs that are available for low-income families, individuals, and also those on medical baseline. And that is either in the course of the feasibility study, or if we decide, again, to move forward with CPA. How do we learn, one, what's the penetration rate in Fillmore right now? So that's number one. How, can we find out how many CARE and FARA households exist in Fillmore? And then, two, can we find out how many potentially exist, but they're not signed up yet? I, I would love to, I'd love to know that because I honestly think that we have a lot of families, a lot of households that would be a part of that program and potentially have like cost savings if we were to, you know, to, to go with CPA. So that's just something I, if you could, you know, assist with that or point us in someone in the right direction, it would be great to find out.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I can tell you a couple of things on that. So first, the feasibility study process involve, the first step in the feasibility study process is actually requesting data from SCE on your current customer base. And so we will have, we will have insight into the total number of customers, number of load. We should, we don't always, but we should get data on how many of those customers are, at least how many are CARE, which is by far the largest block or CARE. There's typically a much smaller number of families enrolled in FARA. And I don't know that we get the medical baseline, but it's also likely to be a smaller number. Also, I want to say on enrollment rates, so we, I, I, we won't have any particular insight into how many people would be eligible but are not on it. I will say in general, across the state, the penetration is actually pretty good. So I don't know the exact numbers, but it's higher than you would think, which is not to say that it's not worth doing outreach, because for customers who are eligible, it is very easy to sign up. We all are paying into those programs. And so people who are eligible absolutely should be encouraged to sign up and, and take advantage of that.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Let's see here. I, I noted that you mentioned library cooling centers. I was thinking about our library or our, our memorial building, which is going through a renovation and repair process right now. But that would be, that could be like an example of one of those, like you said, community resilient centers, or even we have our active adult center. Yeah, that would benefit from some program like that. Okay. Yeah, I think that was, those are the main questions that I had. Penetration rate. Oh, you mentioned about, again, the no net profit, right? So all these funds are reinvested in the community.
Yeah. I mean, they're, to the question about what happens as, as renewable energy prices go down, it's up to the board how much of those net revenues they want to invest in local programs, how much they want to use to lower rates. We've also, you know, while we, you know, we're not in startup mode anymore, but, you know, it's been a significant focus of our board to build up financial reserves. So that's been, you know, another use for those, those net revenues.
Okay. Perfect. Great. Thank you. Okay. Have any further questions? I know we have some public comment on this item. Erica, did you have anything that you wanted to add via staff report?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Karen, for your presentation. If we have any additional questions that come up, we'll call you back up. Okay. So first, we have on this item is Fabiola Gomez. Okay. Welcome, Fabiola. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Fabiola Gomez. I am a resident of Santa Paula, actually. But I'm here to support the Fillmore community, sorry, with One Step Alavés and SeaFrog to urge the city of Fillmore to join the Clean Power Alliance. By joining CPA, it will offer Fillmore residents and businesses a choice to freely choose where their energy is coming from. And they can, like they mentioned just now, they can opt out or down. As you know, Ventura County is the fastest warming county in the continental United States. We are on the front line of the climate crisis, already feeling the effects through more frequent wildfires. Recently just had one here in Ventura, in Santa Paula. Extreme heat that we face each year and worsening droughts with also very dry winds. These impacts are only projected to intensify unless we take bold proactive steps now. This crisis is driven by the continued use of fossil fuel, and that's why Fillmore has a critical opportunity now. By joining the Clean Power Alliance, Fillmore can support the transition to clean renewable energy and reduce our dependence on polluting fossil fuels. Fillmore is the only remaining city in the county to join this program. And by joining this program is one of the biggest actions the city can take to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. And this is more than just an environmental issue. It's about protecting the health, the economy, the future of this community. Joining CPA is a concrete step towards climate action, energy resilience, and local control over how we, how we power our homes and businesses. So I urge you to seize the opportunity one more time and move Fillmore towards a cleaner and more sustainable future by joining the Clean Power Alliance program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Fabiola. Okay. Our next speaker is Karen. Sorry, Karen, I wasn't sure on your last name. Okay. All right. Okay. You'll have three minutes.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and fellow city council members. I'm here from One Step Alavés. And I just want to support the Fillmore community. And I urge you guys to support the Clean Power Alliance, because first of all, it aligns with the city's commitment to clean energy, local decision-making, and community force focused benefits. By partnering with CPA, Fillmore gains access to renewable energy options such as wind and solar that can help reduce greenhouse gas emissions and promote environmental sustainability. CPA's model gives local governments more control over energy procurement, allowing Fillmore to choose a cleaner energy source while offering residents and businesses competitive rates. Additionally, CPA invests in community programs that support low-income households and create local jobs. Through this partnership, Fillmore strains its role in advancing a greener future while keeping energy reliable and affordable. Please, city council, join the Clean Power Alliance to help support our community and our residents that live in this community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Karen. Okay. Our next speaker is Melissa Muñoz. Okay. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Fillmore City Council and Mayor Villasenor. My name is Melissa Muñoz. I work at a local grassroots organization, Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas, better known as SeaFrog. I have also lived in Ventura County my whole life. As a young constituent of this wonderful county, I feel it is important to make my voice heard in decisions that affect my future, my neighbors and surrounding communities, as well as precious wildlife ecosystems in the battle against climate change. Therefore, I believe that there is no other reasonable alternative other than for Fillmore choosing to opt in to the region's Community Choice Energy Clean Power Alliance program. This is a chance to take significant action in making sustainability more accessible to all Fillmore residents, accessible in every way, most importantly, by being competitively affordable to all. Community Choice Energy offers an electricity supply alternative to the utility monopoly of Thocal Edison, which in turn would make it so much more attainable and convenient to not only Fillmore residents, but businesses as well. Another significant benefit is that community choice energy pours right back into our communities. This would mean a green workforce development to create safer and greener jobs for community members, electric vehicle infrastructures, resiliency program, as well as other opportunities. In fact, 35 communities, roughly over 3 million residents, including their businesses within, make up the Clean Power Alliance's energy strength. Ventura County is known to be the fastest warming county in the lower U.S., as well as the most disproportionately impacted due to harmful oil industry actions. Fillmore should take this hopeful leap and join the CPA for the better of its residents' health, economy, and greener Fillmore. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. Okay. And our last speaker, I think, on the item, unless there's any more who want to make public comment on this item, okay, is Mr. John Meadows.
Good evening, council. Everybody looks chipper tonight. I think you need to do a little more studying. When I want to know about something, I think really hard who I should call and talk to about stuff. So I called my 30, 40-year Edison friends. And I said, what's this all about? What, what, what is it all, what's it entail? And I didn't hear anything good. Where's Edison tonight? Why are they not here? That's one question I have. You know, green power is a big controversy, as we all know. It's a kind of a hot button issue. I don't know how many of you have been to Las Vegas on Interstate 15 and you passed by the Yvana Paw Solar Generating Station? That's getting shut down this year. They're closing that. That was a big, big money deal, and it's getting shut down. There are others saying they're shutting down now too, because it's just not efficient. So I, I, I would urge you guys to do a little more homework on it. Talk to some people. Again, get both sides. I, I think you guys are kind of already on that path and whatnot. It sounds like the, the Clean Power Alliance, you know, would help programs like One Step Alavés, which is great. I guess if that's their deal, so be it. But I think we need to do a little bit more, because there's some, there's some gray areas in here we need to look at. I mean, I have a lot of questions, a whole bunch. Maybe put together a community panel or a community board to research this. That's what I feel you guys should do. And get some people that have experience on both sides of the spectrum and, and report back to you guys. And, and so you have more ammunition, so to speak, or more of an arsenal, so you guys can make a better decision for the community. But I, I would really urge you guys to do that. I, I think that would be healthy and what would be best. One last thing, go on the internet and type in Orange County Clean Power Alliance. And look at the better business ratings of Clean Power Alliance. You will be shocked. I was. I was like, wow, this is unreal. Just food for thought. But thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Okay. Thank you. We do have one more speaker on this item, and that is Pedro Chávez.
Good evening, Mayor Villasenor.
Sorry. Hold on one sec, Pedro. I'm, I'm sorry.
There's somebody else before you.
I'm, actually, I'm not sure. Maybe I, did I skip one of them? There is one more. Okay. Sorry. Okay. And my apologies to Pedro for calling you up early. And my apologies to Brooke Balthazar for not calling you. I'm sorry about that. My papers got stuck together. Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Fillmore City Council. My name is Brooke Balthazar, and I'm the Community Organizing Manager at Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas, or SeaFrog. SeaFrog is a Ventura County-based advocacy organization leading a just transition away from fossil fuels to protect our health, economy, and our climate. I'm here today to urge you to vote yes on conducting this feasibility study to join the Community Choice Energy Clean Power Alliance program. As it's been mentioned, Fillmore is the only city in Ventura County that has not yet joined this program, which is one of the biggest actions that a city can take to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. Being the fastest warming county in the lower 48 United States, Ventura County is disproportionately impacted by the devastating effects of climate change, a crisis that is undeniably caused by the fossil fuel industry. The severity and frequency of climate disasters is projected to increase more and more each year unless action is taken. By choosing to join the Clean Power Alliance, the city of Fillmore would help to mitigate the impacts of climate change by supporting this transition to clean energy and away from fossil fuels. This is also an opportunity to make sustainability more equitable and accessible for Fillmore residents. As a community-based organization, we often hear that the largest barrier to accessing clean and renewable energy is affordability. But by opting into 100% green default, or even 50% clean default, low-income residents can access 100% renewable energy at competitive and affordable rates. Beyond this, community choice energy agencies like Clean Power Alliance reinvest profits right back into the communities that they serve. In the future, Fillmore could benefit from programs like a resilience center, electric vehicle infrastructure funding, community solar, resiliency and grid management, green workforce development, and more. And I think with, with this in mind and with everything else you've heard, the benefits of joining CPA are pretty clear. And I would urge you to vote yes in support of conducting this feasibility study. Your community is counting on you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brooke. Okay. Our next speaker, and final speaker, I think, on this item, is Pedro Chávez.
Good evening, Mayor Villasenor, Mayor Protem Abermandez, and the members of the city council. My name is Pedro Chávez. I'm the mayor for the city of Santa Paula. As your neighbor next door, representing over 34,000 residents, we have a symbiotic relationship in our valley here. We all see the impacts of climate change in our daily lives, when we see extreme weather conditions and the impact on working families and, and, and our communities. I'm here to state, I'm here to inform you that the city of Santa Paula back in 2023 moved into the Clean Power Alliance. That was a very methodical choice that was made by the members of the council, engaging our community. And we went into effect in March of 2024. Our homes and businesses transitioned to CPA service and automatically received clean, competitively priced energy from CPA. The city of Santa Paula also selected 100% green power with 100% renewable energy as its preferred energy option, making the community cleaner and more sustainable for years to come. Choosing 100% clean green power helps reduce more than 51,000,000 pounds of harmful greenhouse gases each year, which is like taking more than 5,200 gasoline-powered cars off the road annually, or growing 386 trees for a decade. As your neighbor, like I mentioned, climate change doesn't just impact one community or one city. It impacts us all. And I'm asking for your support in moving in this direction so that you can be the city that seals and makes a decision on this very important issue for the entire county, because you're the last city remaining. We hope that you make a thoughtful decision tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. That is it for our speakers. And so, now invite council for a discussion. Anyone like to kick it off?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
So, okay. So, to me, I, I'm very curious to hear the other side of, you know, the, I mean, I hear everything you guys are saying. It's, it sounds great. Obviously, I'm very much pro giving people choice. So I think there's not any negative that I can see so far. But I think part of, at least my deliberative process is always to try to hear both sides because it, it, in my experience, that's the best way to come to a good decision. I know that in Santa Paula, you probably went through a very extensive deliberative process. So in, in my mind, you know, I still have some questions that I'd like to have answered. I, I'm definitely a believer in climate change. I, you know, that's, we see it all around. We see, I mean, all you have to do is look at the graphs of temperature and you can see that it's real. It's not something that's controversial, in my mind. However, you know, I'm, I'm charged up here to make a good decision for the city. And to make a good decision, I believe I have to listen to both sides of any issue. So for me, I, I do want to hear additional information. You know, like John mentioned, hey, he heard from some of his, you know, some friends that work for SCE. Okay. So you didn't mention what they said. I'd like to hear what they say. You know, what, what did they say? Maybe it's good things, maybe it's bad things. I don't know. But without knowing the, the other side of... know. But without knowing the other side of the argument, it, I don't believe in making a rash decision. I do believe in making a thoughtful and careful decision. So I would like to hear additional information, and that additional information can also come from, obviously, the CPA side as well, right? Because I ask for very specific things, and I'd like to see some of that information as well. So that's kind of where I stand. I'd like to see it, I guess, in, my preference would be that we gather more information and delay a decision on the ten-thousand-dollar study. And by the way, Carrie, I think the way I took it was, it's not like we're commissioning a study for us. The way I took it was, we're kind of paying them to do a study to see if they want us to join, because they already, it's kind of like their club. This is the way I took it. It's their club, and we're applying to get in. And so if it doesn't make sense for them, then they're not going to let us in. That's the way, that's the way I took it. Maybe I took it wrong, but that's kind of how I understood it.
I have a question. Can I ask one more question to?
To Karen?
Yeah. So the ten-thousand dollars, say we do go forward, I'm saying, not saying this is hypothetically, say we hypothetically say, yes, we're going to pay that ten-thousand dollars, and we'll move forward, and you do the study. What information can the city of Fillmore, the council get out of that information to use in our decision-making process? What's included in that, in that report, in that study?
So the council member is essentially correct. The purpose of the study is for CPA to assess the impact to our existing member agencies and customers of bringing new communities into the alliance. It will provide an estimate of the greenhouse gas emissions savings, depending, depending on which default energy rate option you choose, and how that compares to what your emissions would have been if you stayed, would be if you stayed with Edison. So it would have that information. We are happy to provide, in addition to, it's really not part of the feasibility study, but we can provide this information, you know, without the feasibility study, an estimate of what the financial impact to the city would be for your own electricity accounts. The impact to customers will depend on, as well, you know, including the city, will depend on which rate option you choose. But, you know, based on the numbers that I presented, you know, if you're at one-hundred-percent green, your electricity bill is going to be about five percent higher. If you're on lean, it's going to be, you know, around one percent lower. So if you have, you know, if your electricity bill is a hundred dollars, it's, you know, five dollars more, one dollar less is the range of financial impact.
Yes?
Another quick question follow-up to that. So if I understand correctly, that CPA would be doing the feasibility study, we would pay CPA ten-thousand dollars to do the study? Okay, and that's something that didn't happen in 2018.
Yeah, in 2018, you know, CPA didn't exist. It was actually in 2017 that the original feasibility study was done. It was funded by the county of Los Angeles, and the decision was made for all of the cities that participated. There was no fee for that, you know, for that time. It, you know, and it said, you know, if you, basically, if you sign, if you, you know, opted into the study by a certain date, there would be no charge. After that, the charge would be up to the board. The reason that, so the ten-thousand-dollar fee actually doesn't cover the full cost of doing the study. One of the reasons that we request the fee is, it is, you know, it is a way of determining whether a jurisdiction is, in fact, you know, serious about moving forward. You know, it sort of forces a deliberation and a decision, so that we're not spinning our wheels. We pay for the data that we get from SCE. The city doesn't pay for that. We undertake the cost of the study, and, you know, we have limited resources. We're not keen to go down that path, just, you know, sort of for the fun of it.
Right. Karen, can I ask you about the feasibility study payment? And again, as you go down the path of maybe hearing, you know, information from Edison, how long does that payment hold? So if we were to do it, does that, like you said, I know the path that you gave out on the graph says, okay, you know, end of fall, but if we said, well, we want to kind of chew this longer, does that ten-thousand-dollar hold for a bit?
That's a good question. We've never found ourselves in that situation, but we have discussed in the past the idea that, you know, essentially that it's good for two years. So I would have to go back to, you know, to my boss to confirm that. But the other thing I just want to reiterate is, if CPA decides not to invite you to join, the ten-thousand-dollar fee would be refunded.
Right. And then if you can say just one more time, just for clarity about, I know we saw the timeline, and maybe we could bring it back up again, but there's a, to me, just saying, in bringing this forward for an agenda item, there is, there is a, there is a process here that happens where, you know, if we want to move forward for eventually, you know, hypothetically speaking, if we were to hear, chew on it, decide still to go to CPA, not doing this process by, I guess, you know, making a decision on the feasibility study at today's meeting, there is not that chance to make that choice again until another year. Is that right?
Yeah. So this brings up a point I wanted to make, if you, if you, you know, choose to delay or defer making a decision on the study. So one of the most time-consuming parts of the study process is actually getting the data from SCE. Typically, it can take a couple months from when we put the request in to when we get the data. So I would encourage you to consider directing staff to go ahead and initiate the data request. It's zero cost to the city, zero obligation to move forward with the feasibility study, let alone with joining CPA. But the sooner we get that started, the sooner we have the data, and that essentially buys you some time to make a decision on, you know, whether you, in fact, want to move forward with the feasibility study.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, of all of those who, cities who have submitted the ten-thousand dollars to CPA, how many has CPA said, sorry, we're not going to partner with you?
Zero. Yeah, it has not happened.
Okay.
Our board is interested in bringing more cities into the fold, and the feasibility studies have shown that the impact to current customers is usually small, not nonexistent, but small.
So, and I'm, I don't want to come across as being inconsiderate, or, you know, overly assertive here, or aggressive here, but the problem I have with that is it sounds like CPA is looking for customers, and I think you're doing a great job of it, based on the number of cities that, you know, have come under your fold since 2018. But I've never heard of a company saying, we will do a study for you to decide if we will invite you to participate in our business, in our services. So pay us ten-thousand dollars, and we will do an evaluation for you and let you know if you're a good fit. And what you've just conveyed to us is that you haven't found a single city that wasn't a good fit yet. So for me, that's a red flag. And I understand the really great speakers who were speaking up here earlier about the great services that the, these type of alliances can provide, and the green energy, and so on and so forth. I'd like to hear, as John mentioned, I would like to hear from Edison. I would like to hear what their programs are, what they can provide as well. And I think that's the only fair way to move forward on this, is to bring in our representative from Edison and let her do a presentation as well. So we're on equal footing, so we know exactly what our options are. And I don't know how many people in the audience can tell you immediately, right off the cuff, they don't have in our head, I don't have my head, exactly what Edison can do for us.
I can elaborate. I haven't given my comments yet, but I can elaborate on what Edison can do and what they cannot do.
But I still would like to hear from Edison.
Oh, that's good. That's noted. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Karen. So I guess I'll leave then to my, to my comments. And that is, you know, speaking back to addressing what John and Carrie were mentioning about Edison, what can Edison do? Now, I know you mentioned, Carrie, that Edison was, came in 2018, but they weren't. They were here, they were here, was it just a year ago or two years ago?
Twenty twenty-three.
They were here ago, yeah, they were here two years ago in 2023, and Natalie Yanis came up and spoke, and regarding energy, which is what we're talking about, about ratepayer energy and green energy in particular, is they are not, their green rate program is not open, and it has not been open for, I think, several years before 2023. And that is because there is such a waitlist of Southern California Edison customers who are not part of Clean Power Alliance or any of these other alliances, who want green energy. And they have not had the ability, or I'm not sure if it's the wherewithal, or maybe even the focus, and it's a little bit more I wanted to speak about, of secure, of getting, securing, procuring more clean energy for their program. So anyways, so any of us who want to go to Southern California Edison and say, okay, I want to sign up for Southern California Edison's green rate program, can go to the website and see a banner at the top that says, our green rate program is closed. And we will let you know when it opens up again. I've talked to, and every, every time that I've met Edison, and this is two years ago, Natalie came, and we asked her then, but in the last two years, I've been part of the government advisory panel, and I've had about a series of three or four meetings, and I've asked, including the CEO, the CFO, and the community outreach folks, what's going, what's moving with your green rate program? And they have said, nothing. It is, the green rate program is not moving with Edison. The services, what they do have is, I think, what Natalie came up to us, maybe even just a couple of months ago, and said, well, you know, for the PSPSs, we have the Critical Care Battery Backup, which Karen mentioned is, you know, one of those programs that is still possibly open, actually probably very much open to, to those that are members of the Clean Power Alliance. So I understand, you know, the wanting to hear it straight from Edison, you know, yourselves, but I'm just saying, I've asked, like, literally, I don't know, over the last, well, all the years that I've been actually here on council, periodically, what's going on with your green rate program, and it hasn't been. Edison just doesn't, doesn't have it. And, you know, I have other things to mention, too, but I want to say also, what I recall from them is that Edison will not speak about why they're the better, I guess, energy purveyor. What I remember Natalie and other speakers saying is that, yes, you know, we, we kind of, we work together as a way. We know that there are Clean Power Alliances or Community Choice Aggregators all through Southern California, and then Pacific Gas and Electric has theirs up in Northern California. But it's, to me, to me, and my interpretation has not been that it's a, it's a competitive program. It's more, this is what we offer, and yes, there is the Community Choice Aggregators. So, you know, I guess, I have a lot of notes here, but, you know, the bottom line is, the choice today, again, is not, are we going to join Clean Power Alliance? That's, that's not what we're here to discuss. We are discussing the feasibility study. And as Karen said, we can, we can make several decisions on it. We can ask our, our city manager to request that, if we want to kind of keep moving forward with autonomic, we could request for staff to secure that data. In the meanwhile, we can invite Natalie or whoever is it, and they can give a presentation, and, you know, we can, we can hear from them. I don't believe that they're going to have anything to say that is going to say, you know, here's what we're offering, because their, their clean rate program is waitlisted, is not open. There's not a Southern California Edison customer right now that can join the green rate program. And then, you know, and something, too, that just kind of I noticed when I was looking at things regarding Edison, let me see here, look at my notes really quick, that their focus, you know, their focus for Edison, when they look at 2045, that's when, twenty years from now is when they want to see carbon neutrality. That's what they're working towards. And if you go on their website, they're working on their, enhancing their systems, their distribution, of course, their hardening of their lines, but their focus was not green rate energy. It's not something that, that you see as something, obviously, because it's, you know, the program is closed, but it's not, it's not Edison's focus. So what I'm trying to say there is that I don't think, this is my opinion, but I don't think Edison is going to be opening up their green rate program anytime soon. I don't, I don't think that's, that's something that's going to happen. You know, and I, I believe that we can, and that we should, you know, per, per the comments, and per, just something that I've been talking with a lot, that we should, we should really do this. You know, when I was on the Utility Ad Hoc Committee a couple of years ago with a former council member, did the same thing. I said, let me do my research, and then you do your research. And it's really interesting, because it's, one of the public comments said, I went to, and I called the city managers in Hawaiian Gardens and Camarillo, and, and I tried to find cities that were same size as Fillmore, who are part of CPA, and I said, give it to me truthfully. Tell me the real pros and cons, you know, what's, and honestly, honest, they did not have the cons. They said, you know, I said, well, how many people, after you, you know, defaulted into either the, you know, the lean, the clean, or the green rates, what was the pushback, that sort of thing? The cities didn't have that. They really said, you know, we had a handful that maybe opted for a lower level, but it wasn't, it wasn't a controversy, I guess you could say. It wasn't something that was a lot of pushback. My counterpart on the, the former council member, talked to her Edison friend, and I think it's really interesting that, you know, I think if we're going to look and really, John, like, get an idea, it's talking to cities, and I mean, asking again the pros and cons, but I think, I think we can have Edison, an official representative from Edison, come and speak. I can understand that. But I don't think our research was on equal levels. I was, you know, put that out there, because I really was trying to find, you know, some cons, and really, and I think we can see it from our examples in Ventura County, that it has been a positive program for everyone. And I want everyone to understand that everyone, literally, everyone around the boundaries of Fillmore and beyond is part of Clean Power Alliance. If you cross Sespe Creek and go talk to anyone that you know that lives on Grand Avenue or Cliff, they have Clean Power Alliance. If you talk to anyone in Bardstown or Piru, they're on Clean Power Alliance. Like Pedro said, everyone Santa Paula, everyone. And that's not to say that, hey, everyone's on it, us join it, but there should be some understanding from us as decision-makers, that we do talk, and maybe get the pros and cons from the cities, but we see what's going on, and why are there trends going in a certain direction. So, you know, that's my viewpoint. And then one last thing is, this is ten-thousand dollars from our general fund reserve. I want to note that our general fund reserve believe, where's Deborah? Is it about eight-point-eight million dollars or so? This is point-zero-zero-one funding, to use it. It is one-tenth of one percent if we were to do this. And again, move forward with the study. Again, we can, you know, that doesn't have to be an option, but I say that we move forward. I think it's a good investment that puts us onto a path that, in the meantime, let's bring up the Edison rep, let's bring up a few more cities if you'd like to. We can call them as well to get a full, well-rounded picture. But I think, I think that we, this is a worthy investment for all the reasons that Karen really, I think, explained to us about how, how it works, and it's something that we should, that we should move into, like, we should move forward with, and continuing to ask questions, and really, yeah, and really weigh, weigh things out with more information. But I think this is a critical first step to even start doing that.
So Mayor, are you, are you suggesting that we take a vote for this today, tonight? Or are you saying that we, we should get a little more information before we take a vote?
I, my, my recommendation is to, well, I mean, my overall recommendation is to, to pay the fee, to pay the ten-thousand dollars to move forward with the feasibility study. I support moving forward in some sort of way. My, what I oppose is taking no action at all on this. My, what I, what I oppose is taking no action at all on this.
I, I think I can get there, but I don't think I'm there tonight, honestly. I think, I'd, I'd like to hear a little bit more information. I mean, I think I'm stating the obvious when I say that there are obviously outside political influences here. Um, and I, I'm trying to minimize those outside political influences. I'm trying to make sure that I make a decision that's best for Fillmore without, you know, all the national and, you know, all those other crazy, uh, ideas that are out there influencing, influencing us or influencing me. I'm trying to do what's best for my, my neighbors, you know, my, my friends, my family. And, uh, and I think, for me, the best decision is, hey, I think, I think a little, I need a little more information. I think I'm leaning towards the, the direction you're going, because fundamentally, I believe that choice is a good thing. And having a monopoly like a utility is not a good thing, but I want to hear the other side.
I also wanted to add a little bit to that. I am, I am a little bit cautious and curious as to, um, a few of the other factors. I want to kind of jog back to the last meeting that we had where we talked about the Housing Trust Fund. And in that situation, um, we had a discussion and, and the difference there is an individual will then reach out to the city that they want to participate in the Housing Trust Fund and get into the program. The reason I'm a little bit hesitant is because, um, to make a, a, a blanket decision for the whole community and, and then there's going to be a lot of people out there who have to, they got to go into a web portal or call a phone number to opt out. They might miss the ball. I, I, I do want to empower the citizens to have options. I do want that. What I don't want to do is, is create a variable and slightly erratic scenario for different citizens who then are going to be frustrated and, and confused, why am I even, why am I going through these hoops? Why, I tried to opt out, now, now, now I have these higher rates, now I, I want to, do I opt back in, or I got to wait now? And it, it creates all this variability. Now, there is, there is a lot of, um, that's going to happen anywhere you go with choice. I do also want to hear, um, from, like, as, um, an alternative on, on our agenda is, is to, um, request additional information. Perhaps, um, the CPA can get those numbers from Edison. I think that would be helpful. And if there are other agencies, now, I understand that Edison may not be able to provide a type of green platform now, and maybe not for a while. But I want to hear from them of what is a general pros and cons that they experience from customers, because the customers are going to call Edison. The customers are going to call CPA, I want to opt out, I don't like, for whatever reason, right? And then the customers are then going to be in communication with, with Edison, regardless of whether or not they want green energy. This is another loop. And, and I, 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 I also want, um, a little bit more information, um, because this is a decision that is a blanket towards all of the community. And we're going to get a lot of people that fall through those cracks.
Okay, um, I'm just, I wanted to just pitch in here, right, and real quick comment on that one, is I, there is the potential for that, but I, I think Karen explained a little bit, but there's, there's more that in this, on this graph that we're actually looking at right now, that onboarding process, public outreach is basically almost like a whole year of education. And I know that the cities can kind of speak to it about the process they go to to explain what's happening. So I just want to let you know, it's not like, there, there's, um, you know, one day you're, you're Edison, the next day you're CPA, and, you know, figure it out. There, there is intentional community education outreach to, you know, multilingual, uh, so I just want to let you know that, so Luis, that's, that's also it. Any else?
I just wanted to, in my preparation for tonight, I, I, I reached out to other elected officials, uh, throughout the county. And I, I specifically, uh, spoke with individuals who I knew had different, uh, who weren't politically, like, who would vote the same way I did. So I, I spoke, I wanted to see their perspective and, and why they, uh, how they, what they thought about the Clean Power Alliance and why they voted for it in their cities. And, uh, they didn't have anything negative to say. All their positives were of the choice that it gives their customers, the control over the prices. And personally, I have, uh, I'm familiar with Clean Power Alliance because I, my office is in Westlake Village. And we opted out of Clean Power Alliance at the beginning. And I already knew the answer when I asked them, can we opt back in? Because we opted back in later on down the road. And, and if you were really paying attention to your bills and you see, okay, what's my rate? And that's why we do it, because we have, at my office, we have over 50 accounts, like, electric bills. And so we always want to get our best rates. And so far, uh, Clean Power Alliance has provided that, and we can see what, what Edison is charging. And so we, we use that as a competitive advantage. Hey, what, who's offering a better rate? That's we, that we use, that's, that's why we opted back in. But it's the choice, and customers always have the choice, and it's not hard at all. It took me five minutes on the phone to opt in, it took me five minutes on the phone to opt out. It, it's not hard at all. It's, it isn't hard at all.
Yeah, I was going to say, Albert, when, when you mentioned the choice, is that we would have to look at where our baseline is right now of, of no choice. This is where we are.
Customers have more choices, cities have more choices. And, and I think it's a no-brainer if, if, to, to opt in, just because it gives us more control, and we're always banging our fist, hey, we want local control, uh, it gives, this gives us more control over our energy mixes. And if you don't want to, if you don't want to opt, be in it, you just simply pick up the phone and say, hey, I want to opt out. And so you're back on Edison. And it's as simple as that.
You know, I wanted to make one comment really quick on, on the opting and, and the defaults, I think Luis mentioned it too. And that is, um, I'm pulling up my notes here, um, that, you know, CPA is, is that default, right? And, and we think of default, I, I feel like in the past, it's been looked at as negative. Um, they're, they're all defaulted in, you, you've got to make that choice to come out of it, and it might get, might get messy. But default, just a concept of default is an incredibly powerful tool, um, to affect change. And in this case, change for the better, right? Change towards clean energy, renewable energy. You're automatically enrolled, but you still have that freedom to choose something else. Um, and studies have shown that, um, most people stick to defaults. Um, and I think the most prime example of this, and it was like, oh, this really makes sense, employer-based retirement plans, right? So if employees are automatically enrolled, you know, there's a much higher participation of them than if an employee was individually have to opt in, it really, it wouldn't happen. So, so the ma, I want to say the magic of Clean Power Alliance and all the Community Choice Aggregators is the default, is the default, saying that we, again, as elected representatives who are making decisions that are right for our community, we would, you know, pick, um, you know, maybe move forward with the study, take that time, um, hear from, again, from Edison, from our current power provider, of what they could potentially do. Maybe, maybe things have changed, uh, from earlier today, when I was looking at the website. But, um, you, you would do that, and we would, we would make a choice, you know? But again, that's a choice down the line. But I think just to even, even get there and consider it, we're having a good discussion today, and, and like I said, I hope that we, um, can, can see that, see that potential, see that potential in, in moving forward with, with this first step. Um, or at least, again, moving, moving forward in some way.
And I, I think it is important for, uh, our other council members who weren't here previously to have that, all the information.
That's true.
To make a, to make a more informed decision. Uh, some of us have been here a little bit longer and have some of that, that knowledge, but I think it, it, all of us should have that knowledge so that we all make a, a more informed decision as a group.
Well, I, I think one of the other things I'd like to do, if, if we're going to move forward and ask staff for additional information, I think we as a council owe them, uh, to be very specific about the exact information that we'd like to see, uh, because we don't want to just say, oh, I'd like more information and, you know, leave that in the ether. I'd like to see us, as a council, come back and say, what specifically would we like to see? Um, I, for one, uh, I would like to hear from SCE, whether it's in written form or if they want to do presentation. And I'd like to see some additional information from SCE. Um, and I'd also like to see the information specifically asked for, if it's possible to get by the next meeting, uh, the rates that we, the energy generation rates from SCE versus Clean Power Alliance, uh, over the la, over the existence of the Clean Power Alliance. So that way, we can make a good, a good decision based on information that, that we have.
Also, um, I don't know if this is possible, is it possible to reach out to other cities and get statements from them about their experiences with Clean Power Alliance? I, I know the, I reached out to five different cities.
We can try. Manny and I can divide and conquer. The staff report would be due on Thursday, today's Tuesday, so.
Can we get specific about how many? Because I don't want it to just say, oh, all 28. Can we please get all 28? Uh, can we limit it to, let's say, five that are similar sized?
Let's do Moore Park?
Well, let's, let's let the staff decide, but let's say how many.
That's, that's very similar to what I did a couple of years ago, when I did my research. I think I reached out to like five similar-sized cities.
Is that, is that doable?
Yes.
Erica, okay. Karen?
Yeah. I was even going to request that we hear from other cities, but, um, my only request is that before we make a decision on this, uh, that we direct staff to continue, um, researching Community Choice Energy Programs, um, including having Edison come in and do a presentation. I don't think it has to be anything in-depth. It should be very similar to what we've heard tonight. But have Edison let us know what their perspective is on CPA. Is it a competitor? Are they competitors? I'm hearing, getting mixed messages on that. I'm hearing that, oh, no, they work well together. They work, you know, in, in support, I, I don't know, that's not the message I received previously. But I'd like to, I'd like to hear how it's going now in this day. So I'd like to have Edison do a presentation before we move forward.
One thing I want to bring up to council is, if we're, when we reach out to Edison, I don't know what their availability will be, so chances are they might not be available to be here next meeting. So just be mindful of that.
And, and being mindful of, of that, Erica, I'd like to make a request of the specific ask that we're asking out of this is to, I agree, I think we should request from staff to ask SEC for the data, to make that request. Is, um, Karen, can you tell me, is that a, is that an email? Is it a form?
It's a form.
It's a form.
We've done it before for other programs. It takes about three weeks to get the data. I recently did it about a month ago.
Three weeks would be great.
Three weeks would be great. Yeah. Right, yeah, okay. Is there, so does that sound like the formation of a, if someone could maybe sum that up with a motion? Or is that good? Is direction back to council on this? Maybe back to staff?
Is that clear enough for staff?
I dotted everything down, yes.
I'm, I'm happy.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to just note, um, very grateful for, for your time. Um, we've been having a great, long discussion. We've had a lot of great perspectives, and I'm, I'm really appreciative of everybody who's been participating in this dialogue, because it's very important to us. As you can see, we don't want, um, you know, we, we, especially as, as newer city council members, we want, we want to really be certain and, and patient. But, but we are grateful for this. We want the community to have more choice. I think we all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Luis. Um, yeah, I do appreciate everyone's comments and everyone for coming today. And I think we're clear with staff, so we are moving on from this agenda item. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay. With that being said, we will now move on to our next agenda item. So item 8B, Appointment of New Individual to the Planning Commission to Fill the Recent Vacancy.
I guess they want me to be the new commissioner. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and Fillmore residents. And so staff recommends today that the city council confirm the mayor's recommendation and approve the appointment of Alex Flores to the Planning Commission to fill, fill a recent vacancy. Planning Commissioner Gary Cushing resigned from the commission effective April 2nd of 2025, creating a vacancy for the remainder of his term, which runs through January 31st of the year 2027. Following the resignation, staff notified the Ad Hoc Committee, Interview Committee, which consists of the mayor and council member Brogie, um, about the vacancy. And so in line with the city policy, applications from the interested candidates are kept on file for up to one year. So staff gave, offered the Ad Hoc Committee the option to review these applications. And so that were not selected during that, uh, interview process. So during the planning commission, in, sorry, interview process recruitment in January. The committee chose to interview the three applicants on file, and they recommended to appoint Alex Flores to fill the vacant seat. So the, per the Fillmore Municipal Code, the planning commissioners are appointed by the mayor with the city council approval. And if the, if this is approved, then Mr. Flores's term will expire on January 31st, 2027. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Unfortunately, Mr. Flores was not able to make it today, um, but he is excited to.
He is here.
Oh. Never mind. He is here. And I don't know if he'd like to say any words, or?
No.
He, he's confirming that he is excited.
Oh, yes. I'm glad he can make it.
Okay, thank you, Arali.
Can I ask some, a basic question here? This is me showing my green, uh, tail here. So what are the, what are the basic requirements for being on the Planning Commission? Is it just basically being a resident of the city of Fillmore? That's the only requirement, or?
So resident, having familiarity with, um, planning initiatives, projects, um, having some experience, I believe, as well as some of the key components that the Ad Hoc Committee were looking for.
Yeah, go, you want to add?
I was on the Planning Commission, and I had, that tells you a lot. I mean, I had no experience, but anyway, four years. Um, but I do, I do want to say, though, that, um, the candidates that we're seeing, um, are just far and above what I've seen in previous interviews. And I just really appreciate that, you know, we were able to hire a candidate of, of your caliber. Um, and it's just great to have applicants interested in working, serving the community in the capacity of Planning Commission or, um, any one of the commissions. But it's, it's just been, it's been different, uh, and, and I'm pleasantly surprised. So I think, um, you do a fantastic job. Thank you.
Yes, thank, I just want to, I'll reiterate that or just ditto it and say that, uh, Mr. Flores, um, was a small business owner in Fillmore, and so she has that small business experience of, of, of working in the city, and, and that was just really wonderful. So you're going to be such an asset to, um, to the planning discussions. Okay, I'll, I'll, um, look for a motion then on this item.
So, second?
Okay, first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes, welcome. Okay, uh, next agenda item, 8C, Ordinance 25-983, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Regional Agreements That Do Not Require City Funding.
Mayor, I'm presenting this item tonight.
Yes.
Pursuant to state law, the city council needs to approve all contracts unless they officially delegate that authority elsewhere. The municipal code gives certain authorization to the city manager to sign certain types of contracts and to take different actions. But right now, that list does not include signing agreements that don't have a cost to the city. So the ordinance presented to you tonight would amend the municipal code to add to the list of city manager duties, the ability to sign these agreements. And these are agreements, they're often regional and with other local public agencies that offer city staff to be part of a cohort to undertake some activity, but don't require actual payment of funds. These often, um, are requested on short notice, and so there's not always enough time to bring them to the council. And sometimes the city can be a difficult party when everyone else gets it signed right away, and we have to say, well, we have to prepare the report and get it to the agenda, and it holds things up. So the request is that the council add this authority to the city manager's authorities. It would be subject to the typical requirements that the city has, that it would be in an agreement approved by the city attorney's office, but then if there's no cost, the city manager has the authority to sign them. That's the recommendation to council that you approve this ordinance to make. That's the recommendation to council that you approve this ordinance to make that change. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, do you have any questions? No, it's pretty clear. Oh, yes.
Will I make the meetings a little bit shorter?
Yeah.
Save us a couple of agenda items.
I was wondering if it was if it was something like decisions that were to be made that were normally made somewhere else, but but now we're delegating.
Yeah, exactly. Right now, for example, there's an agreement, I think, on the next agenda, or is it on tonight's agenda, about participating in a cohort in the county about green waste? That it's all staff time. And so staff had to prepare a staff report, put it on agenda. It'll come to you. You'll have to talk about it, whereas in the future, the city manager could just sign that. So it will it's not every meeting that there are these items, but from time to time, they do come up.
Meets our meets our city organizational goals of efficiency and streamlining. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion. I think we need a reading of the ordinance.
The title, please.
The title, please. Mayor Protem has it, if you don't have it, John. Okay. You need your mic on. Thanks.
So this is an ordinance 25-983, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fillmore, California, amending 2.04.020 of the city of the Fillmore Municipal Code to grant the city manager the authority to execute regional agreements that do not require city funding.
But motion, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. We are on item number 8D, implementation of the Aquahawk alerting system for the city of Fillmore water customers. Welcome, Lora.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council members and Fillmore residents. My name is Lora Nevenegas. I am the fiscal technician for the finance department. Joining me tonight, I believe, I have a team of consultants joining via Zoom from Wildan and Aquahawk. They will be available during this presentation and after as well to assist in answering any questions you may have. Tonight, staff recommends that the city council receive and file this update regarding the implementation of the Aquahawk alerting system for the city of Fillmore's water customers. In 2022, Wildan Energy Solutions approached the city of Fillmore to conduct an initial evaluation of the city's water infrastructure. The assessment focused on the potential for upgrading to the use of the Advanced Metering Infrastructure, or AMI. The following factors were considered: age and condition of existing meters, water usage patterns, expected revenue recovery, system reliability, and billing integration. The study outlined estimated costs, energy savings, available incentives, and possible funding sources for improving the water infrastructure. One of the largest findings was the inaccuracy of the older meters as they were underreporting the water quantity and volume. After reviewing the findings, the city council chose Wildan Energy Solutions to carry out a more detailed analysis, finalize the project's scope and costs, and implement the project through an energy and water savings performance contract. As a part of this contract, there was an accuracy improvement of 10.2% guaranteed on the billable consumption. This performance contract was approved by city council on December 12, 2023. Resolution 243988 was shortly adopted thereafter on February 27, 2024, for the approval of an approximate $5.6 million equipment lease purchase agreement for the AMI meters. The replacement of the meters began in May of 2024, and the city has since successfully replaced a total of 4,228 meters. During this time, we have overseen the beta testing of the metering system Aquahawk, ensuring the accuracy of the meter readings and the functionality of the physical meters themselves. We have trained all staff members in the finance department, who serve as first line of communication when it comes to all questions regarding water. Staff members from the public works department have also received training on the troubleshooting of meters and reports generated by the metering system. Approval of this item has no fiscal impact on the city as the system was included in the approvals given with the adoption of resolution number 243988. I have prepared a short demonstration of the Aquahawk customer portal.
Just hit scape, and I think you'll be able.
Yeah.
If not, Dan, I'm sorry. I told you to put the Zoom up. Could we?
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Go there. Okay.
Just give it a second. I had asked him to put the Zoom.
Awesome. Okay. So this presentation will give a brief overview of the benefits and the features that Aquahawk provides. As we prepare for the launch of the system, we will be providing more information through social media campaigns, newspaper articles, billing inserts, mass phone messages or phone calls, and through a designated webpage on our website, on our city website. How does Aquahawk benefit customers? You will have easy access to your water usage on any device. You will also have the ability to have more control over your water bill by being able to monitor your water usage in dollars and being notified when your usage is trending higher than usual. You will also be able to receive customized notifications by your choice, whether it's text message, email, or phone calls, and set usage notices to avoid surprise surprises on bills. You will also have the ability to identify leaks at a much earlier stage, saving money and water while also helping prevent property damage or potential property damage. Registering for Aquahawk is very simple. All you really need is your utility bill, more specifically, your account number located at the very top of the bill, and your contact information. Once you've entered in your contact information and set your contact preference, you will click register. You will receive an email with a link to finish registering and setting up your account. Once you have registered, you will be able to navigate through the Aquahawk portal. At the bottom, a few things to note here, at the bottom of the page, you will be able to view your usage across different time periods, whether that's hourly, daily, monthly, yearly. On the top right of the page, you will have a view of your of a log of outstanding and past alerts. These will be the same alerts that you will receive through your preferred contact method. At the top middle of the page, you can view your information on upcoming bills. In taking a closer look at that top middle, there is an estimated bill and a projected bill. So the estimated bill is what you currently will show what you currently owe, and the projected bill will show what you will owe at the end of the of the billing period. You will also have the ability to see your water, your current water usage, as well as your projected water usage, and you'll be able to toggle between the two different units of measurement. We have 100 cubic feet, which is what we utilize for billing purposes, so that number will reflect on the on your water bill. And the other unit of measurement is gallons. Another thing to note on here is there is also a pay online button, which will redirect you to our online civic pay to be able to make water payments, set up, set up electronic bills, and also view your statements. As of now, we currently have a total of 457 water customer accounts who are currently set up with electronic billing, and we receive or we have a total of we have around 2,500 customers who utilize it on a monthly basis to you to pay their water bill. The last thing to note in this section here is the My Thresholds button. This is what you will be able to utilize to set specific limits. So by clicking the My Thresholds button, you will be able to set preferences either in a by a specific dollar amount or by water consumption. So let's say, for example, your utility bill averages $150 a month. You'd like to set a threshold for $200. You can receive notifications once it surpasses the $200, or also if it's projected to surpass the $200 value after at the end of the billing period. There are also more advanced features in this section here. Aquahawk will help improve public communication and engagement by ensuring timely communication with the public regarding high or abnormal water usage and leaks. And that concludes my presentation. Myself and the the team of consultants are available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Lora. That was a great presentation. All right, do we have any questions?
Yes. Can you tell the council what other communities are using Aquahawk?
Yes, I think Dan or Charlie, I think Dan, would have a little bit more of a little bit more information on that.
Yeah, perfect, Lora. So we have, this is Dan Prescott with Aquahawk. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. I can hear myself, so it's interesting. We have over 100 utility customers across the U.S. using the Aquahawk application. We have Dublin-San Ramon is a community that's in California that have been using that application for over, I think, 15 years now with great success. They've done a lot of community outreach and got a lot of their community involved. But more than 100 utilities across the U.S. have used it, and it's a great service for their community, and will be for yours as well.
Thank you, Dan. One of the, I guess, one of our nearer cities that's currently going through this process right now is Paramount. So we've been pretty close closely following their their steps. They are a larger city, but that so far, we've been able to follow through that process as well to do them. So, yes.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, all right, I think we're, I mean, I just want to. Okay, we're presentation. My my comment is, this is going to be so helpful for the community to be able to monitor their 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 water usage in real time. And and like you said, the of being able to see a leak, you know, right away and 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 address it is incredible. And the added benefit of this is the system of notifications with the city and every, at least the main household person's cellphone. I mean, just it's just that's great that we can, when we're able to utilize it too, I believe, right beyond water notifications that we at some point potentially.
Yes, we will. The city would be able to also send out emergency alerts or, you know, through that system as well.
Wow, that's great. Okay. All right, this was a receive and file, so I think we're we're okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay. Okay, we're on to item number 8E, introduction of ordinance 25-982, updating the city's fire hazard severity zone map. And good evening, chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I get started, I just want to double check. Did the council receive the the map itself? Do you have that in your possession or available to you? You have access to it? Okay. I printed up some just in case you did not. Okay, so Madam Mayor, council, staff, and residents, I'm here to introduce a proposed ordinance, ordinance 25-982, which will update the city's fire hazard severity zone. Routinely, CAL FIRE, California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, updates their S R A maps, state responsible area maps. It's done every five years. But they have not routinely updated the fire hazard severity zones. The maps that we've been going off of were published in 2011 from a 2010 survey. So CAL FIRE then recently updated their fire hazard severity zone maps, and they sent them out to us just a month or so ago. Briefly, though, is the discussion for that. California Government Code gives the authority to to CAL FIRE to identify and map the areas of significant fire hazard statewide. Their cat and these fire zones, for the most part, have just been labeled as the severe fire hazards severity zones. But the latest update, which just came out to us on March 10, goes a little bit farther. It identifies the very high fire severity zone and also identifies high and also moderate. I'm going to give you an example here very soon after I do my presentation of the previous map compared to the new maps. But going on in this discussion, we received the new maps on March 10. We were given 30 days in order to post this to the city. That has been done. The new map in generality added quite a bit of the city into the very high, also the new high and moderate zones. It added actually areas to the east, to the south of the city, along the Santa Clara River, and also on the west, the Sespe side. Most of the area to the north was already identified as very high high severity area, but there was also an increase to the north, slightly into the city limits. So again, those areas were included when they weren't before. So the new maps basically have an adoption date of 120 days by the council for for the city limit jurisdictions of Fillmore. That gives us about four months to adopt it. That's why we're here again tonight to present the initial reading of the ordinance. There's basically three options that the council can do. One is, number one, adopt the map as it stands, as it sits. Number two, we can basically say, we want to add more. We don't want to, you know, we're not satisfied with what CAL FIRE has already identified as as new areas, but we want to add more on our own. And then three is if we want to go ahead and and add more of the of the lower areas, the the moderate and or the high zones. At this point in time, this has been reviewed by staff, it's been reviewed by the fire department, and we definitely do not want to add any new areas, whether it's very high, high, or moderate. So basically, what staff is recommending at this time is option one is just to adopt the map as it's proposed. There is no option available to the city to go less than what's printed. So and I'll I'll talk briefly about that after I go through the staff report and give you some additional information. So again, the the government code basically says that we need to adopt the the new map. Again, they gave us the we've we've already publicized it on the city's website within their required 30 days. And again, now we're within the 120 days to to adopt. What does that mean then, adopting this new ordinance? Well, it basically means that the areas are identified as very high severe zone, very high severity zone, will probably require new restrictions on building. Will it outlaw building in these areas? No, absolutely not. But with the building comes additional restrictions. The building standards will have to be to the latest adopted fire codes and California Building Code, which, in my opinion, is not that severe. There are additions to the building code that the new developments will need to have, but in my opinion, it's not so severe that it should prohibit it in any building. It'll also require to ensure that we enforce defensible space requirements. We already have a weed abatement program in the city, and it'll be just adding additional requirements to that weed abatement code, which is going to be basically not a big burden upon the fire department of the city to do that. Access and egress standards will have to be enforced. So for every populated area where fire may impact, there has to be more than one way of getting in and out into a development. So there'll be we'll ensure that every proposed project has multiple ways of of getting in and getting out in case there is a fire. We'll have to make sure that the road road widths are adequate for fire apparatus to come in and for residents to evacuate if if they're going opposing directions. And again, just the the standards, fire standards and the building codes that that basically protect our residents during times of of conflagrations. There may be additional fire protection measures, fire resistive landscaping, automatic fire sprinkler systems, water supply, which again, should not be big burdens on on our city. We have real. We have real, real good water. We're very proud of that. The fire resistive landscaping is something that's new. For a lot of the houses that have caught fire during conflagrations, a lot of the houses have ignited because of landscaping, fencing, miscellaneous items that are right next to the house, side by side, within that first five feet. You'll hear a term later on, it's called the zero zone. Zero zone is from the edge of the, of the structure, five feet out. So that'll be one of the, the standards. The, the suggestion is, it doesn't have to be solid concrete five feet out. There's room in the code for, for gravel or, or for other non-fire, or other fire resistive material. But the days of having the vinyl fencing right up against the fence in the fire severity zones, those days are, are gone in the very high severity zones. Vinyl fencing can be very, very flammable at times. The days of having the, the plastic trash cans up against the building, those days are, are going to be gone within that zero to five foot. The days of having the backyard, the chase lounge with the, with the mattresses and everything that, that go there next to the structures, those days are, are going to be gone.
Does that include like attached wooden structures like pergolas?
So the pergolas will have an exemption for those. We'll, we'll have to get into the code exactly for that.
Okay, so, so besides the code-
Yes.
Just from your experience-
Yes.
Wouldn't that be a danger to have it connected to the house?
It, it would be if it's real thin building material. The thinner it is, the more likely it is to catch fire. If you've got, you know, four by four posts along with two by fours on, on the pergola, chances are that it's going to be a lower risk unless you got netting. If you have flammable netting on top of it, that definitely would, would increase the probabilities. So, yeah, we'll, we'll have to get into a lot of the nitty gritty. And there is, not necessarily right away, but we will, the word I'm getting is we will have to go back and do retro inspections on areas that, that now fall into the very high severity zones. So, yeah. Okay, so anyways, the last part is, we may have to do, you know, more in-depth studying of, of, of projects. I doubt if we'll have to do any environmental impact reports, but that's a probability. And there's other more in-depth studies if we deem them necessary in order to become fire protective. So, just as an FYI, people have asked, well, how is this going to impact our, our insurance? That's, there's a high probability. I'm not in the insurance business, but there's a high probability that it could be impacted. We, we know that, you know, throughout time and history, and then some of us ourselves have been impacted by it, that we may have to go to the California Fair, Fair Insurance Plan. So, as far as impacting the city budget, we don't anticipate any, any impact to that. This definitely, this ordinance definitely falls in line with the city council's goal to put emphasis on public safety and disaster planning. So this is, definitely falls in, in line with, with that priority for, for the city. So, I'm just gonna show real quick now. Oh, okay. So yeah, I'm just gonna show real now quickly the, we'll zoom in here on Fillmore. Okay, so disregard the right side of this, but on the left side is our fire hazard severity zone prior to March 10th. So basically, we have all the northern end of the city here, the foothill area, up into Pole Creek, and then it drops down along Mountain View. And then on the north side of Highway 126, El Dorado on this map was not included. This area here to, to the right, this was included prior to any of the Heritage Valley track being. This used to be all vacant land. It was orchards and, and fields that had been abandoned. There may have been, I believe, one or two residents in here prior to 2010, prior to any construction taking place. So that's why this was included that was south. All this area in here was based upon our fire history. Our fire history is basically wind-driven fires coming from the east or from the north impacting the city. One of the things that in the new evaluation part, and I don't know, again, all the scientific, all the scientific research that went into the, the formula for the new zones, but I do know that in this 2010 model, wind was not considered. After devastating fires in Northern California, the Napa Valley, you remember Paradise, the, the car fire, the campfire, where the, almost the whole town was, was wiped out, wind was a primary factor in pushing those, those fires through the residential areas. So wind, wind was now included in the new, in the new zone. And I will now kind of, this is, this is the, the new map. I'll try to get it, most of it. So again, this is the northern part that was included before, the, the foothill, Pole Creek, Forest Street area. And that was in, the area around Mountain View has been increased. And, and I can understand with the east winds and north winds, this area being increased a little bit. Now, El Dorado and some of the eastern part of, this one is, is hard to tell as far as the detail. But it pretty much includes, well, it does include all El Dorado and most of the area of the new Heritage Valley development, about halfway into the, to the development. On the south end, the south end holds pretty tight to the levee. So there's not a lot of area. This little kind of area that pooches in, this is where Pole Creek comes in, where the Settling Basin is and so forth. So that's understandable. Everything else kind of rises the top of, of the levee there. What's kind of confusing, this is Highway 23, the Barge Dale Bridge where it comes in. And basically, River Street is kind of in this area here. And then the, the levee along Burlington is, is kind of right in here. So the middle of the river bottom, can understand that. But what's kind of not quite understandable to me is why this goes so deep on the south end. And again, the only thing just, we haven't been able to get a, a good answer yet. The only thing that I can guess is, again, wind is a new model. And they must have put in a 360-degree wind into Fillmore. Obviously, anybody who's lived in Fillmore for a while, I've been here for, for my whole life, I've never seen a strong south wind impact the city of Fillmore. But that's, that's a wind model they use. It was a strong south, south wind. So the next review on this, we don't have a date yet, but the next review, the city of Fillmore, we definitely want to provide some, some input where we can on, on this south end here. And then going up to Sespe, the fire hazard severity zone here, the red, the very high severity zone, that pretty much falls on top of the levee. There is a small area in here that goes into the current track. I just had a brain fade there. Just, just west of, of Mountain Vista School, that track in there. There's a little bit that's included. Yeah. And then, and then, then again, the, the top of the levee comes in. It drops down a little bit in here where the new proposed Creekside track is included in the very high severity zone. So that's kind of in a nutshell, the, the new information around Fillmore. Obviously, it's a lot more than, than what we have. But again, tonight, we just want to introduce the, the ordinance and let the city council digest that. And Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want to read that ordinance or how you want to proceed, but I'll, I'll be here to answer any questions.
Sure. Thank you, Chief. I think there might be a couple of questions.
Yeah.
I just want to thank you and staff for your time and for working on this. There's a lot of information and for putting on the workshops that you did. We, I, I attended the first one. And there's a lot of information, good information. Thank you. I had one more question. It might be Kevin, maybe.
Sure, absolutely.
For the, how will this affect the Creekside and the building of Creekside? Or is it going to be?
Yes. So those units in the Creekside will follow the fire mitigation maps.
Okay.
There aren't very many homes there, but we'll look at the materials for those units.
Okay, thank you. And so I, I suppose, you said, yes, those units will have to go include the zero hardening, the zero-
Yeah, the zero scape.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And by the way, ever since you, with that workshop, I started the zero scape of my home. I, I've started chopping down trees and bushes that are near my home. So it's like, Chief comes by, he's gonna be proud of me.
Yeah. Definitely, definitely will. Yeah, no. So definitely, I, it's, it's a concept that everybody in the city, and if you're not within the, within the very high or the moderate or high, it's, it's a good concept for, for everybody. So, just a quick story. People know me, I like to make short stories very long. So we, 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 we had a, we had a fire at, at a fairly new hu- house. It was on New Year's Eve. A resident had put hot fireworks in his trash can and it caught the side of the garage on fire, burned the garage door and went into the garage. And that was, that was within, burned the, the vinyl fence, burned into the neighbor's vinyl fence. And again, it's just, it was that, it was that zero to five feet that impacted the, the garage. So it's, it's good fire prevention for, for anybody. And then also, we'll be going around and doing inspections on those areas in the very high and offering up those suggestions. We'll also be doing some workshops later on. I do want to thank, though, the, the city manager and staff for helping out with those workshops, those two workshops we did. They, there was a lot of, I'm not very IT savvy, and they did a lot of work to post everything and, and get it out to the citizens.
Great, thank you.
Can you give a copy of the map?
Yeah.
I'll pass it around. Okay, I had a couple of questions. Thank you, Chief. And one of them is, you had mentioned that they're at the next review, I guess, of the maps, that there might be the opportunity for some advocacy-
Yes.
And changes? Okay.
So that, you know, Fillmore's not the only city in the state that's impacted by this. So there's a pretty big move among a lot of the municipalities to want to provide their part of the story as far as the next revision of this, of the fire severity zone maps. So I'm sure that our, our lobbyists, you know, something for them to, to take up and, and ensure that we have the voice of Fillmore at the next revision.
That, that would be great. Yeah. And I think you brought up the right point about it. This is following the levee on the south side with the idea of, we've got, you know, the riverbed and potentially, potentially, south winds. You know, the, that red zone goes pretty far over their levee and, and Riverwalks, so.
Yeah, I get, you know, it goes up to Highway 126.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And then I, I think this is something I discussed with Etica, just sort of brainstorming or wanted to see if you had heard of anything. On the whole home hardening front, I guess the question is, is there any way for communities or neighborhoods to come off of the high fire severity list, right? Like, like, let's just say, given that there was a, you know, a, a home hardening, either certification or something where in a whole neighborhood, everything was cleared, the zero, you know, is there any, have you heard of anything like that?
So I, I, I have heard, there's, there's a process. It's called Fire Wise Community. And it's an effort, nationwide effort. It's recognized by most insurance companies. It's an effort as to take a geographic, geographic area, a group of homes, working together. The homeowners can, can work together and do additional clearance. They can work on additional water sources. They can ensure that everybody in that geographic area does everything they can to, to try to prevent a fire from spreading. Right now, we do have one community, it's on Hunter Drive. They've started the process. They're not fully recognized yet, but they've started the process. We hope to be able to expand that to Morris Drive and, and Foothill and, and the rest of, of the communities. I do want to say, we are working with the Ventura County Fire Safe Council. We do have some days coming up. We're looking at a date towards the end of May to do our biannual hazardous weed clearance, free drop-off. And then we're also looking at towards the end of June, before the 4th of July, what we call a chipper day in the northern part of the city where, where I believe the threat is, is the highest. For the residents, they can cut, cut their branches, cut their brush. They can leave it on the side of the sidewalk and then we'll come through with a contract crew and, and chipper and we'll remove all that free of charge. So we're gonna put a big push with that on the northern part of the city. We'll have flyers out and put it on our, our website, so. Right now, it's just tentative because I have to confirm with the Fire Safe Council, but we're looking towards the end of, of June. I, I'm shooting for that last Saturday. I don't know if that's the 28th or, or what that is, but that's tentatively what we're shooting for, is that, for that chipper day.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's great.
This question, does that also include like removal of, like old trees or anything like?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. If something won't fit into a chipper, it's so big, we'll go ahead and just cut it, bucket up in the smaller size and we'll, we'll take it.
Okay. And does, again, I'm unfamiliar with this, but does the city have a program to remove trees that might be a, a fire hazard?
As far as I know, right now, all we have is what's on the city property. We don't have the authority to go on to private property and clear. Now, we do have the authority, if someone fails to mitigate their own fire hazards through our weed abatement program, we do have the ability to, to go on and mitigate. But we try to work with the property owners to educate them that it's to their best interest to do the work themselves or to have a contractor that they know come in and do the work themselves. Because there is an administrative fee that, that we have to tack on, plus our costs. So it's, it's beneficial to the property owners to get the work done themselves.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. All right. If you don't have any other questions, thank you, Chief, for the presentation. And I'll entertain a motion and a, a reading of this ordinance.
I move that city council approve ordinance number 25-982, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fillmore, California, adopting a new map with updated fire hazard severity zones as recommended by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection.
Okay. I have a first or I have a second? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is number 8G, Economic Development Plan for Downtown Fillmore.
Actually, it's 8F.
Oh, I'm sorry. 8F. Oh, did I? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me reread that. 8F. Approve the 2025-2026 Agreement with the Fillmore Unified School District to Fund Two School Resource Officers. Okay. Hi, good evening, Chief.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members and community members. So I'm here to present the 2025-2026 Agreement with the Fillmore Unified School District to Fund Two School Resource Officers. A little background for your, for you guys is, as you know, the Fillmore School District currently has two SROs that cover all the school campuses here in the city of Fillmore and, including Pyrum Elementary. One SRO is funded through a partnership between the city and the Fillmore Unified School District. Through this partnership, the cost of the SRO, of one SRO is shared equally between the city and Fillmore Unified School District, with the school district paying the cost of any overtime directed by the school district. The second SRO has been funded since March of 2020 through the Fillmore Unified School District's DOJ grant and would continue utilizing LCAP funding, LCAP funding, which I will get into here shortly. That second position was approved by the Board of Supervisors and City Council in March of 2020. Since the DOJ grant, that's, that grant has since expired. And so last year, on April 23rd of, of last year, the city approved a one-year contract with the Fillmore Unified School District to keep the second SRO position. This contract is due to expire on June 30th, 30th of 2025, and the Fillmore Unified School District has requested another one-year extension of the second SRO. District has requested another one-year extension of the second SRO position. Under the proposed new agreement, the school district would continue to pay all costs associated with the position, utilizing District Local Control Accountability Plan LCAP funding, and the cost of the position would continue to be billed to the City of Fillmore on the monthly police services billing statement from the county, with reimbursements coming from Fillmore Unified School District. Because the city contracts with the Sheriff's Office for Police Services within the city, the city will need to agree to extend the term of the second SRO position until June 30th of 2026. If the city does so, the Fillmore Unified School District will be responsible for the actual cost to fully fund the second SRO, with the parties continuing to share the cost of the original SRO position. Fillmore Unified School District will be billed for this SRO monthly during the entirety of the extension period. Accordingly, the cost of the second SRO would be a pass-through on the Sheriff's Office billed to the city to be paid by the Fillmore Unified School District. There is no fiscal, additional fiscal impact, the second SRO will remain a pass-through cost wherein the Fillmore Unified School District pays the entire cost of the position. This item does meet the City Council's goal of ensuring public safety. And with that said, city staff recommends that the council approve an agreement with the Fillmore Unified School District for the continuation of two deputy sheriff positions in the city's existing police services contract with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office to serve as school resource officers for fiscal year 2025-2026. And I'm here, I can answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Do we have any questions? Any items? No? Okay, I think it's pretty straightforward, okay, thank you, we'll entertain a motion on this.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve an agreement with Fillmore Unified School District for the continuation of two deputy sheriff positions in the city's existing police services contract with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office to serve as school resource officers for fiscal year 25-26.
A second?
Okay, great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. It is 9:00 PM, we have been trudging through this, this meeting, covering very important topics, but it is time to take a five-minute stretch break and a quick bathroom break, and we will continue on with the agenda. Thank you.
Welcome to the longest meeting in a lot of long times.
We call.
Twenty-two Retail Strategies Five Plan Year that was conducted back in 2022 is available on the website. It was provided to you as part of the staff report. And then the vision alignment, it supports the city's commitment to creating a vibrant, revitalized downtown area. The completed milestones that we have been able to achieve so far is the business support materials. Staff was able to present how to open a business brochure that's available on our website. And we also have a business recruitment packet that has been used a couple times when we have attended conferences such as the ICSC. We also, with your direction, approved a downtown rehabilitation grant program that was paid out of the American Rescue Funds. We had ten businesses that participated on that and we were able to assist them with their improvements on their facade and storefronts. So that was really good. We also have a branding initiative. So the city branding toolkit and logos were developed and they're consistent for identity. That's available too. And then we had a community event last year for the Fillmore Family Fund Day that was launched with participation of the Ad-Hoc Committee. And we have been partnering with EDC as well countywide. They have provided two workshops so far, which have been the social media workshop. And then we also had one a few months ago on business licensing and taxes and how to start a business. Those workshops were recorded and they're available on our YouTube page for those that were not able to attend. But like Mayor Pretem stated earlier, they do have a lot of really good resources for small businesses. So it's really good for our business owners to tap into those resources that are available countywide. So we decided to look at this at short, medium, and long term. So short-term priorities, which are attainable quicker, would be the downtown beautification, continue the cleanup efforts. There has been already new planters. The planters have been updated with flowers, I should say. And then we talked about exploring a Fillmore mural. That would be a destination site where you could, we could create a handle for hashtagging on Instagram. A lot of the newer generation likes to do that. They go out for experiences. It's no longer just to go buy things. And so that could be an attraction if the mural takes its life of its own, where you can have, you know, someone who's an influencer come hashtag it on their website, their followers look at that, and then that becomes an attraction for downtown. We discussed about having, because we have a lot of local artists and talent, having some sort of a contest, putting the guidelines of the contest and then having the proposals be submitted, allocate some funding, and then hire that artist to move forward with the mural. Business resources. Continue to update the city website with clear user-friendly guidelines for prospective businesses. Also, working on conducting a targeted internal marketing campaign by leveraging already existing resources and technology. By that I mean, working with the local businesses to create, and I want to thank our city clerk, Olivia. She came up with the idea of having a business spotlight via the Gazette. And in conjunction with that, city staff would go and have like a very short reel, sixty seconds. Tell us who you are, what you are offering to Fillmore, and then why Fillmore is unique. And we can have parameters go out. We don't need anything fancy. We can do it with our phones, upload it to YouTube, and then start sharing that on social media to assist and work cohesively with the businesses in downtown. The last thing is the ambience enhancements. So one of the recommendations that the report had was the installation of Edison Bistro Lights. We have a caveat. We need to continue working with Edison to be able to install the electricity pedestals that are needed so that we can move that forward. Staff is coordinating with Edison to make sure that we move that project forward, the application, and then we can have power in downtown and then purchase the lights. Medium-term priority would be to conduct outreach to identify business owners and investors interested in locating or expanding into downtown Fillmore. And then the long-term priorities would be updating the downtown specific plan, design standards, and having a twenty-plus-year vision. So this, this long-range initiative will provide a solid framework for sustainability of downtown growth while honoring still Fillmore's unique heritage. The additional staff proposals that we've heard from a couple of business owners would be considering adding a downtown banner where we could install it where our banners are usually placed, where it would be a downtown historic Fillmore banner on Central. Obviously, you would approve that before we, we go forward with it. We have budgeted the wayfinding signage, which will direct traffic to the areas of downtown, historic downtown, and also bike path. That's included in the proposed upcoming budget cycle. And then we're working on collecting business information via the business license renewal process. Our current system, our ERP system, doesn't have, like, the ability to have all of the information such as phone numbers and emails, but we can leverage other applications that we use. So we're planning on sending an insert with a QR code so that the business owner can, you know, real quickly with their phone, scan the QR code, and then update the information of who the business owner is, their contact information, and their email, just to make sure that we have that current list and current information. We're also talking about having quarterly meetings. The Ad-Hoc Committee identified a number of businesses. So we have now the contact information. We're planning on scheduling those meetings with those key individuals as well. The fiscal impact, next slide, please. Wayfinding signage and marketing are included, as I mentioned, on this next proposal budget. The spotlight videos may require a small amount. We have already added a little bit of money if we needed to. I don't foresee it. We're using a YouTube creator, which is free to use, and you just upload. And so, you know, our cell phones will do it for now. And then the beautification cost will have some impact, but it's already budgeted for as well. And this does align with the council goals of revitalized downtown Central Avenue, and it also aligns with our core value of community center growth. And that concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions. And thank you, Ad-Hoc Committee, for all of your input. Really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Great presentation. Okay, do we have any questions for Erica from council? Any opinions about direction here on our different alternatives?
I'd like to just make a couple comments. So we, we paid for that marketing plan. It was very comprehensive. I don't know if you guys had a chance to read through it. It's pretty long. But I will note that, as the city manager noted, there are some price tags that go along with that. And I think that we, we, if we paid for the marketing plan, then we, as a council, should be ready to also, you know, put up when it comes to paying for some of these recommendations, because they're, they're very good. The, the, the marketing plan that, at least from what I read, and other marketing plans that I've read in, in the business environment, they did an excellent job. And so, you know, I, I would highly encourage you, if you haven't looked through it, there, there are definitely things that are going to cost some money to get done. And I, I would recommend that we probably spend some time looking at that, at that marketing plan and seeing where we can spend some money to, to make an effective change to the downtown area.
I just want to echo what Councilmember Garnica said. You took the words right out of my mouth. And they did a fantastic job on that marketing plan. And, yeah, I think we should delve into it a little bit more and see what aspects that we want to use in it or use the whole thing and get serious about really applying those tools that they gave us.
Go ahead, Carrie.
This has to be a top priority for the community of Fillmore for city council and city staff. You know, we've been working on trying to improve downtown Fillmore for as long as I can remember. And I just don't, I mean, I'm seeing movement forward now. And I think this document here and just the whole agenda item reflects that. But I agree a hundred percent with John that we need to, you know, we spent money on this. We need to spend the money on it, on what this, this plan is. So I think this was just a, something very worthwhile, and it has to be a priority.
Yeah, agreed as well. A question, and I don't know if, if this came up and where, if it would be short, medium, or a long-term priority, or if it even came up as a priority or somewhere to delve into. Was there any discussion in the ad hoc group about regional, I don't know if we're going to call it a chamber or organizations of businesses? Because, again, we need, and I see that there's, there's steps here to engage with our local business community, a group of leaders. But is, is the idea of, you know, partnering with Santa Paula or Santa Clara Valley, I know there's the Heritage Valley Tourism Bureau, but is there, is there talk about, just sort of, not just, I guess this is, this is limited to downtown, but has there been talk about looking further into that to really kind of guide our local businesses to something that they can just be a part of, engage with, grow with, learn? You know, maybe EDC comes to them, you know, instead of reaching out? Just some input on that. That'd be great.
I think the, one of, one of the areas that we need to look at is actually as a gap is when, when the marketing plan was created, the Fillmore Association of Businesses was in existence. And from what I know, it's no longer in existence. So we, we really have a gap there. And, and I think it's probably an area that we, as a city, need to really look at to see how we can encourage the business. I mean, there obviously, if you're in business, you're busy, you know, running your business. But at the same time, you know, there's, there's a lot to be said for getting together with other like-minded business owners to, to put forward a cohesive plan, right? So there, there's definitely a gap there, and I think that's one of the areas that we, we, as a city, need to, need to focus on as well. And Erica?
And yes, to your point, Councilmember Garnica, there has been side conversations with the Santa Paula Chamber of Commerce. I know that there is the idea of wanting to have more of a regional effort so that it includes Piru, Fillmore, and Santa Paula. That is something that it's not uncommon. I learned on Friday that the Oxnard and Camarillo Chamber of Commerce have now joined alliances. I know Moore Park has recently, you know, entered into having one. And so there has been discussions internally on reaching out to Moore Park, continue to work with John Marquez and the Santa Paula Chamber of Commerce. And also, now that Manny's here too, he is the chair of the Heritage Valley Tourism Bureau. And so we're going to make sure that we continue to allow him to be part of that group so that we can continue making progress. But I do agree, when the map, when the plan was created in twenty-two, we had Fab. And after that, we've been trying to entice the business owners. And I think one of the main topic of discussions is going to get those business owners that were identified by the Ad-Hoc Committee, get a pulse from them to see how they feel about, you know, potentially joining the, the chamber and moving forward so that we can get this momentum going. And I also see this, you know, this is just an initial plan. It doesn't mean that we're going to just do that. You know, there's a lot of work that needs to come with it. So I see this as a live document, similar to the goals, as we, you know, set these priorities right now. And then, once we've achieved that, we can continue building upon that.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate seeing that and part of, and like you said, in the short, medium, or even if it is long-term plan. Okay. All right. I'll look for, for a motion on this if we're, let's see, where staff is seeking direction. Anyone have any input on where we'd like to go? I, I myself think that the priorities and the way they're outlined for the different terms makes sense, and it makes sense to invest where the recommendations are to invest.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think the alternatives laid out, I think number one would be the alternative that I would want to give staff direction to.
I'd agree.
Is that a motion in a second?
Well, the recommendation says, you know, staff is seeking direction. So I guess I'd make a motion that we direct staff to implement the economic development plan, priorities as presented.
Okay. All right. Do you have a second?
Is there an opportunity that we can reach out to John again and we have another meeting and invite some other local stakeholders? Can, can, maybe, can that be added in here? Or should we just go ahead with this motion and then on the side, reach out to John and set up another meeting?
When you mean set up a meeting, you mean have him at council? Or do you mean to just with the Ad-Hoc Committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second.
Second, I'll second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Great. Thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is H-H, Agreement with Hearthstone for Recurring Reimbursement for Pole Creek Debris Basin Cleanouts from Storm Drain Maintenance District Number Seven.
Thank you, Mayor Viasenior. Good evening, long evening. Thank you for the stretch break. Okay, so the item before you have the full staff report. This is an agreement with Hearthstone, which is the developer of the Heritage Valley Specific Plan area, for recurring reimbursement for Pole Creek Basin cleanouts from our, the Storm Drain Maintenance District Number Seven, which covers that whole area of the Heritage Valley Specific Plan. Basically, Pole Creek Basin was constructed as part of the development. The entitlement, the conditions of approval, and everything intended for Ventura County to take the basin over upon completion of construction. And the ongoing maintenance of the basin is paid for through Storm Drain Maintenance Assessment District Seven, which the idea would be that the county would own it, the city, and the county would have an agreement where, when the county does maintenance, they invoice the city and the city pays them out of that assessment district. The holdup has been that the basin has been in place for nearly ten years and the county has not accepted it. And there's all kinds of reasons and discussions surrounding that. We're still having meetings with the county and trying to get that forward. But as you know, last year, we entered into agreement with Hearthstone after the big storms of the year before to clean the basin out to the tune of like $1.3 million, which that work got done. Where a couple of years later, county still hasn't accepted the basin. There's maintenance that needs to be done. And I realized, we need to do something that's more sustainable in this interim period until the final disposition is reached. And so the idea of this agreement is to make it more of an ongoing. While we're in this situation, Hearthstone owns and operates and maintains the basin. They need a way to, because we are ongoingly charging through the assessment district, the homeowners, for the maintenance of the basin through the assessment district. That's how it was designed to function. And so this sets up like a task order process whereby the city manager, working in tandem with the city engineer, public works director, and finance director, to, you know, look what money is available in the assessment district. Public Works Director Bellomo and I will review any scope of work requests that are submitted, put it into a task order basis for city manager approval, and then they can perform the work. They always have to follow all of the work to spend public funding, even through the assessment district. They have to pay prevailing wages. They have to get three bids. They have to, you know, follow all the processes, which they will do. But if they do all of the processes based upon an approved task order, and the money is available in the assessment district, then they could be reimbursed on an ongoing basis. So that's the gist of this item. The details are in the staff report. I'll entertain any questions.
I guess my question is probably already in the staff report, but Hearthstone is in full on board with this. Is there any timeline that, that they have to say, we'll do this for a certain amount of time and not any longer?
Well, Hearthstone has reviewed the agreement, is in full agreement with, you know, they already said yes, and if we pass it, they'll sign it. So they think this is good planning. They want to be free of this responsibility as soon as possible. And so we've been working closely with them and, like I said, having meetings with the county and trying to bring this to an end. But it's, it's, it's something that the county has to get comfortable with taking over the basin. And it's, I think the biggest glitch is environmental permitting. And the county's feeling the liability of, you know, the fish passage and different environmental permits that are slippery, for a better word, and they just don't want that liability. So they've been not willing to take it over so far because of that issue. So, the long and the short of it.
Thank you. Thank you for further explanation.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, if there's no more questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the attached facility maintenance agreement with Hearthstone, authorize the city manager to issue task orders to Hearthstone for performing as need to clean outs of the Pole Creek Debris Basin, and authorize staff to arrange reimbursements to Hearthstone for incurred costs for such work through Storm Drain Maintenance District Number Zero Seven in amounts authorized by the Public Works Director and the Finance Director.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, first and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next item is eight I, Resolution Number Twenty-five dash four zero six three, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Fillmore, declaring its intention to grant a franchise to Crimson California Pipelines LP.
I'm presenting this one. Mayor?
Hello.
Crimson California owns a pipeline that runs throughout the city and it has gas and oil running through it. They pay the city a franchise fee that's set by the Public Utilities Code that's based on the length and width of the pipe. So there's no negotiating the fee. It's established by law. If you authorize the ordinance. The ordinance that they have currently for the franchise is fifteen years, and that's coming to expire soon. So they've asked the city to prepare a new franchise for them. This, the item before the council tonight would initiate that process by the city declaring its intent to move forward with that process. If the council adopts this resolution, there will be a public hearing set, at which time the council will consider an ordinance. It will be substantially the same as the ordinance that's already in place. It will just have a new term. A representative from Crimson is here if you have any questions. And that's it for the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Does council have any questions? Okay, I, I do have a question. So we've had this pipeline last fifteen years. Has it been in existence for much longer than that?
They took over from someone else at the last fifteen years. It was around a while before that. But do you know how long, if you could come into the microphone, please?
Okay, thank you.
I don't know the date off the top of my head, but it might say in the ordinance.
So I can't tell you. Good evening. I can't tell you how long the pipeline has been there. I know we took over from ConocoPhillips in 2008.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Where is it?
So I, I was here in nineteen ninety-four during the earthquake. And at that point, the, the gas pipeline ruptured on the east side of town, and there was a huge, it, it actually burned. Like, there was gas that came out of it. And it, it was the only thing that was lighting up the city right after the earthquake. So I know it's been around at least that long.
Okay, interesting. Okay. All right. Well, if we have no other questions, then I'll entertain a motion on this.
I move that city council adopt Resolution Number Twenty-five dash four zero six three, declaring its intent to grant a franchise.
Okay. But first, do I have a second?
Second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. And we're moving on now to item number eight J, the annexation of property to landscape and lighting assessment districts two, zone three.
Good evening again. So this item is regarding Nova Storage, which was development permit number oh-one-oh-two, as a part of the multi-phased development of the additional storage up there on First Street, at A Street. They were conditioned and they did install a new street light on A Street and a new street light on First Street and six new trees on First Street. Whenever we improve for public street trees or new public street lighting, we like to annex the property into our lighting and landscape assessment district number two so that the property owner pays their fair share of maintenance and ongoing energy costs for the lighting. And this item before you tonight is to adopt the resolution initiating proceedings and ordering the engineers' report and adoption of a resolution preliminary approving the engineers' report, and then set the public hearing for May thirteenth, 2025, for annexing Nova Storage's property into lighting and landscape district number two. And this concludes my report. I'll entertain any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Roxanne?
I just had a comment. Thank you.
Your mic.
Your hard work. And, and really, that project really came out really, really well.
It's nice.
Beautiful down there.
Thank you.
I enjoy walking by and just seeing the mural, the landscape. It looks nice. Thank you.
I have to share that thank you with our planning department, our public works department, like every, you know, takes a village and it starts with planning. And so, yes, I think it came out beautiful.
Well done. Agreed. Okay, all right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that, oh, sorry. I move to approve by resolution the initiation of proceedings of the annexation of DP oh-one dash oh-two Nova Storage, annexation territory into the City of Fillmore Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Number Two, Zone Three, order the engineers' report, and preliminary, preliminarily approve the engineers' report as received or with amendments.
Okay, thank you. I have a first, I have a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is number eight K, the initiation of proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for landscape and lighting district number two, oh-two, and Heritage Valley Landscape and Lighting District two zero zero seven dash one for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Viasenior, I'm Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. Item eight K has staff requesting the city council initiate the annual proceedings and review the FY twenty-five, twenty-six proposed assessment for the city's landscaping and lighting assessment district. In order for the city to proceed, the city council must also approve the preliminary annual report, adopt the attached six resolutions, and set a public hearing for May thirteenth, 2025. As stated in the staff report, the city has two landscaping and lighting districts, landscaping and lighting district number two, and Heritage Valley Landscaping and Lighting District two thousand seven dash one. These districts contain landscape improvements in designated medians, parkways, et cetera, and street lighting improvements with the designated zones are located residential, commercial, and mixed-use areas. The annual assessments fund the operations, administration, utilities, and maintenance of the improvements. The assessment calculation includes an annual inflationary adjustment formula that the maximum assessment may increase over the previous year by three percent or the annual CPI rate, whichever is greater, without being considered an increased in assessment. The CPI difference between CPI for January versus the prior year was increased by three point three three percent. Therefore, the prior year's maximum assessment has been raised by three point three three percent to establish this year's maximum assessment rates. This item meets the city council goal for infrastructure. And this is the end of my presentation. Available for questions.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Does anybody have to recuse themselves from this item?
I thought it was for the public hearing, but I couldn't recall.
Yeah, we can do the public demo, actually. We won't put the initiation. We'll have that information for you.
Public hearing. Okay.
No.
All right. We're, we're good, we're good for now, but on May thirteenth, we'll...
Okay. Yes, I recall, was it last year, they, you would say like, I can't do, I can do this, except for those two. We'll be good.
Okay.
Some excitement for the year.
For now. All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, I'll, yes.
It is.
I'll... I'll, okay, I have a motion on this item.
I want the city to adopt initiation of proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for landscaping and lighting district number zero two, and Heritage Valley Landscape and Lighting District 2007-1 for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Okay, have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we are on our last business item, and that is the review of the engineer report regarding the proposed increase in assessments for the City of Fillmore Storm Drain Maintenance Districts and adoption of the resolution to initiate the proceedings and the intent to levy the annual assessments and setting a public hearing date to consider this proposal.
Good evening, council members. I'm Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. As stated, item 8L would be adopting the 25-4062, also adopting the preliminary engineer report for fiscal year 2526 instead of public hearing for May 13th, 2025, to receive public comments on the assessment. As proposed in, sorry, stated in the staff report, the city has seven storm drain maintenance districts. The annual assessments pay for maintenance and operations related to the storm drain facilities and storm water pollution treatment systems available, utilized, or associated with the properties within the district. The annual assessments also include the maintenance and servicing of the Santa Clara River levy adjacent to the district's properties. The assessments calculate include an annual inflationary adjustment formula that the maximum assessment may increase over the previous year by 3% or the annual percentage increase in the consumer price index, whatever is greater without being considered an increased assessment. The CPI difference between the current year and prior year increased by 3.33%. Therefore, the prior maximum rate, assessment rate has been increased by the 3.33% to establish this year's maximum assessment rates. This item meets the city council's goal for infrastructure. This is the end of my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, not? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the city council adopt Resolution Number 25-4062, declaring its intention to levy the annual assessment, approve the preliminary annual engineer's report for fiscal year 2526, and set a public hearing for May 13th, 2025, to receive public comments on the proposed assessments.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries on the side. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on now to our city manager verbal report.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just want to thank all the community members who attended our first city manager's coffee. It was a really engaging event, and so, I just want to thank everyone who made that time to stop by and get to meet the new two city manager and assistant city manager, and it was good conversation. Also, want to welcome Manuel Minadas to the team. We're very excited to have you here, Manny. Not only do you bring, you know, relationships with countywide agencies, your experience, we're happy to have you back in Fillmore, and thank the community for that warm welcome that has been given and extended to you. Reminding everyone again about Earth Day, Saturday. If you don't have plans, also, the flower show is happening on that same day, so we could just send people from the flower show to Earth Day and vice versa. And the fire department will start with the weed abatement collection through the app. So, like, we have a new app, and we're going to start collecting the parcel information for those that need to receive a reminder. So, if you're listening to this, please take a proactive approach, start taking care of your weed abatement before we have to send you a notice, and we're planning on sending those in a couple of weeks, once the data collection is completed. That's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we have no closed session, oh, I'm sorry, yes, John.
Was there any update on the homeless? I know that was one of the questions that was asked before, was a regular update on the homeless situation.
We're still working on the agreements for the grants, so it's still in progress. Once we have, you know, a more significant update, I'll make sure to bring that forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Erica? Okay, all right. With that, we do not have any closed session items today, so this meeting is adjourned until on regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, May 13th at 6:30. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for all your hard work. Have a good evening.